I didn't think so. Not from you. Here comes the clerk. I used to think she was. Bright yellow thing. Here comes our clerk. All set? We'll get underway as soon as they're comfortable. All set? All right then.
Good evening, town meeting members. My name is James Kane and I have the distinct privilege to serve as your town moderator for this annual town meeting. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is our tradition, please remain standing while we recognize the service of former town meeting members who have passed since our last annual town meeting. From Precinct Four, Joseph Dyer Jr. passed on July 4th, 2024. He was first elected to town meeting in 1979 and served until he passed. From Precinct Two, Mahesh Rashamwala, passed away on August 23rd, 2024. First elected to town meeting in 2012, he too served until his passing. From Precinct Seven, Bretta Kopp, passed away on September 2nd, 2024. First elected to town meeting in 2011, she served until her passing. Bretter also served with distinction as a member of the Finance Committee from 2008 through August 2018. And Donald Gray, who served as our elected town clerk from May 1982 to January 31st, 2000. Mr. Gray also served on the Soldiers Memorial Commission. Mr. Gray passed away on November 8th, 2024. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our annual town meeting. To ensure good order, tellers, please raise your hands so that all town meeting members can see you. All town meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town meeting members are asked to sit on this side of the tellers and only town meeting members should be on this side of the tellers unless provided with specific permission by the moderator. Residents wishing to witness this evening are asked to sit in the rear seating. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left so as to be convenient to answer any questions that may be asked by town meeting members. By way of reminder, our town meeting has a long and proud history of civil discourse and orderly debate. No outbursts in support or opposition of a member's comments or vote are allowed. Furthermore, when a town meeting member wishes to be recognized, please await my clear recognition and proceed to a microphone. If you are unable to move to a microphone, one will be brought to you. Once at the microphone, please clearly state your name and precinct and then proceed with your question. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have an opportunity to speak, please limit your initial to an initial question with one follow-up. We will get back to you. Rest assured, we will find time to hear your comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my left and right, to my right, Town Clerk Sharon Thomas, Town Council Steven Madouse. Our Finance Committee is further to my right and I will ask its chair to introduce himself and his colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Starting with myself, Vikram Chawra, Chair. To my right, James Flynn, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, starting with Gene Buttonhagen. And down below, Brian Ganger, David Remington, and Dennis O'Connell.
Thank you. To my left, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar and the Chair of the Select Board, who I will ask to introduce herself and her colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Teresa Flynn, Chair of the Select Board. I am joined with Vice Chair Beth Cassavant and in front, we have Clerk Carlos Garcia and members Michelle Conlin and Greg Richards.
Thank you. With the introductions complete, let's get underway. Our town meeting operates under the laws of the Commonwealth, bylaws of the Town of Shrewsbury, and Town Meeting Time Third Edition. I have examined the warrant and constable's return of service and both are in good order. I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and constable's return. Hearing no objections, so ordered. To the town meeting warrant, each of you should have picked up a report of the bundling articles out front. Please recall that bundling allows one vote to cover a series of items. In any, if any town meeting has a question regarding any article, as we walk through all of them, simply raise your hand to be recognized on that article. As we walk through the warrant, we will call the article. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board will move the printed motion. I will then ask the Finance Committee for a recommendation. Mr. Mizikar will then provide a crisp succinct description of the article. Let us move on now at this time to Article One.
I move the printed motion under Article One.
Second.
Printed motion under Article One has been moved and seconded. Finance Committee.
He recommends Article One by a vote of nine to zero.
We have one report to receive this evening from Mr. Pitney from the Municipal Facilities Operations Committee. Mr. Pitney.
No. There we go. I am not technically savvy, so I apologize for that. And I'm off. There we go. Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Patrick Pitney, Chair of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. I'm pleased to provide an update to the, on the progress we've made over the past year. The Select Board established eight twenty-four to address the future of municipal facilities. The Department of Public Works at 205-211 South Street and Town Hall at 100 Maple Ave. Our charge was to evaluate the condition of these buildings, explore options for improvement, and recommend a plan that would support the town's long-term operational needs. Since that time, the committee has met over thirty times. We have worked closely with the town staff, technical experts, and residents to develop and refine the proposal brought forward at this year's annual town meeting. We're fortunate to have had the support of a committed team. Our owner's project manager, the Vertex Companies, our original architect for the feasibility study and conceptual design, Helene Carl Architects, our current design firm, HKT Architects, and our construction manager at risk, Fontaine Brothers, Inc. This past fall, we presented a conceptual plan and budget to the special town meeting, which authorized $2 million to move into design and pre-construction services. In April, the special town meeting overwhelmingly approved the $42.4 million project to renovate and expand the DPW facility and improve accessibility at Town Hall. Unfortunately, the debt exclusion required to fund the project did not pass at the May 6th Annual Town Election. While the outcome is disappointing, we respect the will of the voters and remain committed to addressing the town's facility needs. From the very beginning, this committee is committed to ensuring the public has access to clear, accurate, and timely information. With the help of the Town Manager's Office, we've conducted an extensive community outreach effort. This included summer tours of the DPW facility, five public information sessions this spring, and a presentation to the Shrewsbury Men's Club, along with ongoing updates through mailings, social media, and the town's website. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank the staff of the Department of Public Works. Throughout this past year, they have been deeply involved in all aspects of this project, from planning and logistics to facility tours and community meetings. Their insight, flexibility, and commitment to improving operations for the long term have been instrumental to our work. And a special thank you to Justin Dobson, Assistant to the Town Manager, for his incredible support throughout this process. Justin has kept us organized, on track, and well-informed every step of the way, and his efforts have truly made a difference. And if, I'm gonna go off track here a little bit. If you've ever seen Justin beside the scenes, the amount of work he does is just incredible and it's, he's really committed to the town and I deeply appreciate his work. So thank you, Justin. This project reflects a full year of hard work, thoughtful planning, and meaningful community engagement. We're grateful for the community's support and look forward to what lies ahead. Thank you.
Comments or questions for Mr. Pitney? Not hearing or seeing anyone. Oh, yes, sir. Johnavan on the aisle.
Kevin Flaherty, Precinct Five. Mr. Pitney, thanks for reviewing that, but what are the next steps at this point?
So at this point, we are exploring those options. We do have, we are at 60% design. I can, I can let Town Meeting know that of the $2.25 million that has been allocated to us thus far, we've spent 2.09 million, or 92%, and that is for all the work that has been necessary up to this point. So we are under budget at this point. Going forward, we're going to continue our work and try and find ways to optimize the facilities and do it at, in a way that is, that the voters will accept. You know, right now, it appears that, I mean, I think there were several reasons for the vote, but, you know, we're just going to keep forging ahead. The committee is still in, together, we have not been dissolved, and we're going to keep our work going.
Further comments or questions with reference to the report from Mr. Pitney? Not hearing or seeing anyone? All those in favor of?
Jim. I think, Mrs. Ezelenian?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gail. I didn't see you. Where are you? Yes. I'm sorry, that's not Gail, that's Carol.
I'm sorry. That's why I'm not the moderator.
Carol Swyden, Precinct Eight. Is it possible that you'd have enough money to replace the leaking roof?
Well, that would, that would have to be, right now, we do not have a budget. What was allocated at, to this point, was for the conceptual design and the 60% drawings. So that would require, that would require funding either from a debt exclusion or from the operational budget.
Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Ms. Flynn?
To note that the Select Board at our last meeting acknowledged that this was defeated at the election and we are going to decide what the next steps are. So we haven't decided whether or not we are moving forward, if we will look at different scopes, if we will just stop, et cetera. So I think it's just important that the committee is essentially on hold at this time. And our next step is to initiate public feedback sessions to better learn why voters voted no. And I think that will inform what our next steps are. So I don't want the community to think that we're just, we're moving ahead. It's very much in a, let's take a step back and decide next.
Thanks, Teresa. I misspoke a little bit. I guess the point I was trying to make is that the committee has not been dissolved. So we're in, we're in a holding pattern right now and hopefully our work will move forward.
Further comments or questions with Mr. Pitney? Yes, sir, right in the middle.
Hi, Ed Boulder, Precinct One. Is there no money in the operational budget to address maintenance issues?
I would have to pass that one over to?
This will go to the manager for that type of question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, yeah. Mr. Mizikar?
The roof repairs are in process. We will address those.
Okay, all right. Because otherwise it would be a motion to appropriate funds from some, fund somewhere to get it back. Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? Not hearing or seeing anyone? All those in favor of receiving the report shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Two?
Under Article Two.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article Two by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
This is a standing article to appoint the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust. The terms of the trust, which were established in 1882, require this action by Town Meeting each year. The current balance in the trust is $5,672.21.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Two? Not hearing or seeing anyone? All those in favor of Article Two shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Article Two passes. Article Three?
I move the printed motion under Article Three. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend passage of Article Three by a vote of five to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
This article is brought forth each year to authorize payment of any bills that was incurred in a prior year in accordance with the general laws. There are currently no prior year bills that are known, and we request this motion be defeated.
Comments or questions with reference to the article? Not hearing or seeing anyone? All those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it, defeated. Article Four?
I move the printed motion under Article Four. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend Article Four by a vote of five to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
This article would allow for adjustments within the current fiscal year budget. There are no changes required at this time, and we request this motion be defeated.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Four? Not hearing or seeing anyone? All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. Oh, there's a question. Mr. Manella? Well, get, let's get a mic to you. Okay.
So what does a finance committee propose? Do we just, don't allow the town manager to square his books? Somebody help me.
Certainly. Mr. Mizikar?
So this would allow us to make adjustments to the current year budget if any substantial changes were needed. Town Meeting controls the budget at the salary and wage line item and the expense bottom line for each department, but the budget's in good shape right now and, and we're not asking Town Meeting to take any action that's within its authority, so we're simply looking to move beyond this article. That's why we're requesting defeat.
Okay.
Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Not hearing or seeing any? All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion is defeated. Article Five?
I move the printed motion under Article Five. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend passage of Article Five by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
The fiscal year 26 budget as proposed is balanced using recurring revenues. No funds are proposed for deposit into the override stabilization account, and no funds are being withdrawn for the operating budget. We therefore request this article be defeated.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Five? Not hearing or seeing? Oh, yes, sir, right in the middle.
Cash Jane, Precinct Four. Just want some clarity on why we're saying not to put any money there this year.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
So the purpose of the override stabilization account is to set funding aside for future operating expenses, and it would only be prudent to place funds in there if they were recurring through the tax levy and not of a one-time source like free cash, because we'd be further challenging the structural deficit of the budget that we face. So rather than use money which is in another reserve account like free cash, which would be available for use in the operating budget if necessary in the future, we're just not proposing to put any funds in. So this is a fully balanced year, and likely in the next fiscal year, we'll start to draw down upon these balances. We don't want to have the override stabilization fund become exorbitant and lock up all future assets solely for the operating budget.
Satisfied, sir? Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Yes.
Louise Garone, Precinct Eight. Just a point of definition. We have subsequent articles that refer to the general stabilization account. Can you please clarify the difference between the override stabilization account and the general stabilization account into which funds are being transferred this year?
Mr. Mizikar?
The general stabilization account could be used for any lawful municipal purpose. You could use it for a capital improvement or emergency capital repair, or you could use it for the operating fund in the future. So any lawful municipal purpose. The special purpose override stabilization fund can only be used for ongoing operational costs in the annual general fund operating budget in support of municipal or education expenses.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to the article? Not hearing or seeing any? All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? Defeated. Okay, we will now move to Article Six.
I move the printed motion under Article Six. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article Six by a vote of eight to one.
I'll ask Mr. Mizikar for some opening statements and then, as we do, we will go page by page within the budget to afford members an opportunity to ask any particular questions they may have. Mr. Mizikar?
So this is the operating budget that's proposed for fiscal year 2026 that begins on July 1st, and it provides for the ongoing operations of all municipal departments and the Shrewsbury Public Schools, with the exception of the utility enterprise funds. The municipal budget provides for level services in comparison to the current fiscal year. In order to maintain those services for municipal departments, the following budget includes funding for one new full-time equivalent within the Human Resources Department, funding to cover salary and wages of 2.1 time full equivalents that were previously funded outside of the operating budget. Additionally, there are two noteworthy initiatives proposed to receive one-time funding within the budget. They are enterprise performance and optimization initiatives to find cost savings and cost mitigating mitigation opportunities within the municipal budgets, within the Town Manager's Office, and updating the master plan, which is found within the Planning and Economic Development Department's budget. Again, it's a level services budget for all municipal operations, meaning that we would continue to provide the same services that we are in fiscal year 2025 as we move into fiscal year 2026 without any significant new initiatives, except for those two matters that I noted, which were one-time funding expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. We'll now turn to Article Six. We'll start on page 10. We'll then move to page 11. 119 Personnel Board, 122 Select Board. Any comments? Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, Precinct One. Just, just for my, just for clarification for myself, you're transferring money from Water Enterprise, Stormwater Enterprise, and my understanding was municipal enterprises were basically businesses that retained their revenues for the purposes for which they were, you know, paid. So what's, why is this?
Mr. Mizikar?
So those funds are known as indirect costs. So those are costs within the Department of Public Works or debt service primarily that are in support of the enterprise activities. So I think one of the clearest examples would be debt service. So when a municipal utility like the Water Fund incurs debt, those funds are expended out of the debt service budget. So we transfer those water and sewer rates into the operating budget in order to cover the debt service associated with those utilities. It also includes things like administrative oversight through the Director of Public Works and the Business Management Division within the DPW that directly support our enterprise activities.
One follow-up, sir?
Just one follow-up. So the, the enterprises are borrowing through the town government and repaying those, those debts, yes?
That's correct. It's subject to approval by this body.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments or questions with reference to 119 Personnel Board, 122 Select Board? Not seeing any? Yes, I see one.
Brian Costello, that's loud. Brian Costello, Precinct Nine. The $300,000, could you just drive that again?
Sure.
Mr. Mizikar?
So the $300,000 is used for salary and wages, and it is the pool of funds that is distributed down into all the individual departments as a part of the town's performance appraisal system. So we have a two-part compensation adjustment for employees, cost of living adjustments, and performance-based salary and wage adjustments. And this $300,000 represents funds that will be used for the latter or any employees' salaries and wages that come up throughout the course of the year.
A quick follow-up. Why would there be zero in 24 and 23 then? Did you not have a performance program?
So it's a little bit finicky on how the budget reads with regards to that. As I said, these funds get transferred out and expended through other departments, so a portion of that $300,000 will be transferred out to cover salaries and wages in a variety or all the departments. So as we draw it down from here, it's expended and represented in the expenditures of those individual departments as you work your way down through the book. So there was originally money appropriated by this body, but then it's transferred out and expended through individual departments, and it's overseen by the Personnel Board.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments or questions with 119 Personnel Board? Yes.
Hello, Caroline Maycumber, Precinct Nine. Just kind of a follow-up to that last question. So it sounds like the $300,000 is sort of like bonus money for performance for town employees. Can you just clarify how many employees this is earmarked for?
Roughly 115.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Page 11, 119 Personnel Board? We'll move on to 122 Select Board. Comments or questions? We'll roll the page to page 12. 123 Town Manager, 125 Human Resources. Comments or questions? Yes.
Brian Costello, Precinct Nine. Same question, I guess, as before. We had, 2023 was 682. I'm just looking at subtotal of salaries, not the full, and it's 961 recommended. It's a 41% increase in over like a couple of years, right? So what's, did you add employees?
Mr. Mizikar?
Yes, we did. We added. We added employees. You can notice that change within the salaries three-line item that went from 150 to 289. That was the addition of, I believe, two assistant, two town manager positions that replaced administrative assistants within the office, and one assistant town manager. So it's a combination of change in title and additional full-time equivalents.
Follow-up?
No.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Page 12, 123 Town Manager, 125 Human Resources. Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to the next page. Page 13, Finance Committee, 131. Town Accountant, 135. Comments or questions? Not seeing anyone. We'll roll to the next page. Page 14, 141 Assessors, 145 Treasurer/Collector. Not seeing or hearing anyone. Page 15, 151 Town Council, 155 Management Information Systems. Yes?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Can you clarify what the supplies and materials for $1.2 million is that we didn't have in the previous years?
Mr. Mizikar?
So if you had referenced page 33 within your book, that's where this line item used to be budgeted. So if you look there, in the previous fiscal year, the total budgeted was $1,199,662. So this is just reallocating out, setting aside as its own distinct budget. Selco provides the majority of services to the town, so it covers salary and wages associated with Selco employees, and along with software, new purchases, and ongoing costs.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, yeah. Why are we doing this? Is this something that we have done in previous years? Or it seems like we're paying things out of different accounts differently than we have in previous years, unless I'm understanding it incorrectly.
Mr. Mizikar?
Sure. So we feel this provides the opportunity of a little bit more clarity within the budget. So that page in the back is known as shared operating support, or operating support, and most of the line items within that category go to support the town and the schools. So bringing MIS out, this shows that this is just, this is just a distinct cost of the municipal departments.
Comments or questions with reference to page 15, Town Council, Management Information Systems? I don't hear or see anyone. We'll move to page 16, 161 Town Clerk, 162 Election and Registration. Comments or questions? I'm not hearing or seeing any, so we'll move on to 17. Conservation Commission, 171, and 174, Planning and Economic Development. Comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to page 18, 175 Planning Board, 176 Board of Appeals. Any comments or questions? Not seeing or hearing anyone. Page 19, Public Buildings, 192, and 210 Police Department. Any comments or questions? Not seeing anyone. We'll move on to the next page, 220, 220 the Fire Department, 241 Building Inspector. Yes? That's fine. We're on page 19.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. My question was about for the Police Department budget. What percentage of that budget is going towards the ongoing investigation regarding the incidents of alleged police brutality that occurred here in February?
Mr. Mizikar? Chief?
Chief Anderson.
Nothing? Okay. Just a second, so everybody can hear it. Kevin, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so the investigation that's our responsibility is done by internal staff, so it falls within the salary and wages. We did have one fee that was covered in the FY '25 budget, no ongoing costs associated with it.
How much was that fee? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are now on page 20. Fire Department, 220, 241 Building Inspector. Any comments or questions? Very good. We'll go to page 21. 244 Waits and Measures, 291 Emergency Management. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. We'll move on to page 22. 294 Forestry, 310 Other Post-Employee Benefits. Comments or questions? Yes?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Under 310, can you just explain what separately, I don't know if it's identifying appropriation is, it was like $1.1 million, I think, back in 2023, and now it's $300,000? Just wondering what that is.
Mr. Mizikar?
Sure, so this is the town's contribution to trust fund that is used for the benefit in the future of paying municipal employees' salaries, or retired municipal employees, excuse me, not salaries, health insurance, once they retire. So it's declining because we're balancing the total funding between this departmental budget and the next, which is pensions. We're favoring the pensions because we have a required contribution. We have to be at 100% funding, and we're working to get to that level and stay there.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 22, 294 Forestry, 310 Other Post-Employee Benefits? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll move to page 23. 311 Pensions, 410 Public Works Administration. Any questions or comments? Not hearing or seeing, yes, sir, right in the middle.
Cash Jane, Precinct 4. Clarification on, oh boy, on the pensions here. So you said we want to get and stay at 100%. Is this part number 100%, or are we still under 100%? Because I see it's unchanged, so I'm just wondering if that's...
Mr. Mizikar?
Right, so no, we're in a multi-year contribution scheme to get us back to 100%. We had achieved it for a short time in January of 2022, but it fluctuates annually due to market returns on our funds that we have invested and other factors, including when people retire and what the retirement payouts are. So municipal pensions are largely employee-funded, and this is the portion that's funded by the town. We're about 90, between 95 and 96% funded at this time.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 23, Pensions, Public Works Administration? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll go to page 24. 411 Town Engineer, 415 Fleet Maintenance. Comments or questions? Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Regarding fleet maintenance, is that just operating expenses for maintenance and repair? And, or is that for actual vehicles? Because on Article 25, you've got the omnibus capital budget for actual vehicles. So what's the fleet maintenance budget going for?
Mr. Mizikar?
Sure, so this is for the within, the division within the DPW that services the entire town fleet. So this is primary, primarily salaries and wages. Automotive repairs and supplies are budgeted within individual departments and then expended by this division. This is not for the acquisition or purchase of vehicles. This is for the maintenance thereof.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 24, Town Engineer, Fleet Maintenance? What's that? Yes, the Deering, how are you?
Could somebody please clarify for me? What is a...
Could you just identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, Martha Deering, Precinct 4. Could somebody clarify me, please, for me, what is a house doctor surveillor, or house surveillor doctor, whatever that particular organization is? I just, I can't see a stethoscope around this person's neck.
Sure. Mr. Mizikar?
So a house doctor is a term that we use when we secure professional services on a lump sum basis, and then expend against them on an as-needed basis. So for a surveiller, we will call upon their services as we need to perform surveying work, whether that's in public roadway work or other land matters of the town. We don't guarantee the expenditure of those funds at any particular time, and there's not a defined particular scope of work that needs to be done, but this firm is technically on-call and required to do our work. This is the way we can do it and stay in compliance with the public bidding laws.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 24, Town Engineer or Fleet Maintenance? Not hearing or seeing any. Move to page 25, 421 Highway, 424 Street Lighting. Comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Molina?
Hello, Jason Molina, Precinct 10. Question about street lighting. Could you explain the increase in cost, for street lighting? Is that driven, first of all, is that services provided by Selco? And if so, is that relative to energy cost increases? Or is there something else, other component here to be able to explain that $80,000 increase?
Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah, so it is services provided by Selco. Portion of it is associated with utility rate increases. It's also being more accurate in the billing and capturing all the street lighting. So Selco has been auditing their programs and identified, you know, a more accurate way, unfortunately, of billing the town for these services. So it's a little bit of both.
Follow-up?
Measure, right? Yes, thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to Highway or Street Lighting? Page 25. Yes?
Louise Garone, Precinct 8. Those lights on the baseball and softball diamonds on Dean Park, are they considered street lighting, or are they in parks and recreation?
Mr. Mizikar?
The latter.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 25, Highway and Street Lighting? Not hearing or seeing. 26, 491 Cemeteries and 630 Parks Maintenance. Mr. Molina?
Jason Molina, Precinct 10. Question about the cemetery account. For the new cemetery, when do lot sales come online, and does the fiscal budget align with that said timing?
Mr. Mizikar?
So that will have to be determined by the Parks and Cemetery Commission. We haven't set a date for that yet, but we have about a year of work to do before we'll be in that ballpark.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to 491 Cemeteries, 630 Park Maintenance, page 26? Mr. Kirk, and then right behind him, Mr. Kirk?
Kirk, Precinct 1. Does cemetery's budget also include expenditures from the trust for the cemetery? No?
There's not.
And just to...
Go ahead.
Where would that information be available?
I don't know if it's in the supplemental materials that were provided. Mr. Snowden, do you know if it is? Or we can provide that information.
Okay.
But there's no trust fund expenditures included in these documents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe there was another question right behind Mr. Kirk.
Sorry for seeming to attack the national pastime, but the, I want to call attention to something that's in the balance from effective on May 30, on, what was it, May 5? Warrant article appropriation balances as of 5/5. There was $52,529 for Dean Park Playground, and another $52,000 for refurbishing the upper baseball. And there's another $52,000 appropriation this year. So we spend a lot of money on baseball.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions with 491 Cemetery, 630 Parks Maintenance? Page 26. Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to page 27. 510 Health, 541 Council on Aging. Yes?
Moderator, Fran Manella, Precinct 3. I would ask Mr. Mizikar to kind of clarify how Dumpin' Worcester and what he's doing here, adding $300,000 in professional salaries, jumps pretty good. Just if you could explain, Mr. Mizikar.
Where are you, Franny?
Health.
I'm sorry?
No, no, he understands where you are. Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mizikar?
So we have decided to move on from our Regional Health Alliance agreement with the city of Worcester, and Shrewsbury will becoming the lead entity in a new regional public health arrangement with the towns of Grafton and West Boylston. What you see reflected here in this budget is equivalent to those changes. So being the lead entity means that we will directly employ the individuals associated with the Regional Health Alliance, and that will include a public health director, public health inspectors, public health nurse. We will be receiving funding to cover the respective town shares from those other towns, though. So we have adjusted the local receipts in our revenue scheme in order to cover that. So the town of Shrewsbury will be paying pretty much the same year-over-year for regional public health services, as will Grafton and Westboro, but the Worcester is out of the picture, and we're the lead entity.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar.
Further comments or questions with reference to page 27, 510 Health and 541 Council on Aging? Yes?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Can you just explain, like, what is meant by regional public health services? Like, what do these people do?
Sure.
Mr. Mizikar?
So there's a broad array of activities that are performed. Some of the most commonly seen things include environmental health inspections, so inspecting multifamily homes, inspecting restaurants, looking into nuisance complaints on private property. Public health nurses track communicable diseases like tuberculosis and make sure quarantining and other things are tracked, managed, and reported to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And partnering with other towns allows us to mitigate costs and share in those costs for common activities across municipal boundaries.
Comments, further comments or questions with reference to 510 Health, 541 Council on Aging? Page 27. Not hearing or seeing any. We'll move to page 28. 543 Veterans Services, 549 Commission on Disabilities? Comments or questions? Not seeing any. Page 29, 610 Library, 650 Recreation. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. Yes, I see a yellow card.
Fran Costello, Precinct 9. On the recreation, that went up considerably over the last couple of years. I'm just curious, what do we do there?
Mr. Mizuka.
Sure, so it's been a key focus area driven by the public engagement in the strategic plan. Within that department to provide for more robust community events, like food trucks, food truck evening, movies, other community activities, touch a truck extravaganza, and then program activities. We're ramping those up as well, providing more opportunities for summer and day camps for students. And one of the most interesting programs is Rec Connect, which is a program that we share in with communities in the region to provide for recreational opportunities for individuals of all abilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to the library or recreation on page 29? Yes, along the aisle, Ms. Harrington.
Maureen Harrington, Precinct 1. I just had a question of clarity on the library piece, in seeing the contractual services have jumped up, and the note here is regarding an increase in fees for internet service. Is that through Selco? And someone can explain these changes that we're seeing from Selco seems to be a pattern here? Thank you.
Mr. Mizuka.
Yes, these are services that we do receive from Selco, and as Selco has been looking at their business practices and understanding their cost centers, internet service was the only utility across all municipal departments that each department didn't pay their fair share. So, Selco pays a water bill, Selco pays a sewer bill, you know, the town hall pays a water bill and a sewer bill respectively, but no one paid an internet bill, and Selco just passed those costs on to internet subscribers who are residents. So, we think this is a more fair way of going about charging each department for their requisite services.
Further comments or questions on Library or Recreation? Page 29. Not hearing or seeing any. Page 30, Debt Principle. Any comments or questions? Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Is there either graphs or a spreadsheet of the remaining balance for all of these debts?
Mr. Mizuka.
Yes, there certainly is. The town has, off the top of my head, about $130 million in outstanding principal.
Okay, I just was wondering if that's available for viewing, that's all.
I don't know if we, we can't put it on the screen tonight, but we're happy to send it out to all town meeting members if you're interested.
I am interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions on 710 Debt Principle? Page 30. Not hearing or seeing any. Yes.
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. I think I'm just not understanding. It's not you, it's me. So, you said we have about $130 million in outstanding principal, but then on page 30, it shows we only have about $8.3 million in principal. So, is it just that we only include a certain amount of principal each year over the life of the debt, or am I reading it wrong?
Yes.
Mr. Mizuka.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator. So, yes, this is our annual payment. So, if you think about, you know, the mortgage on a home, if you buy a home for $300,000, you may only pay $12,000 a year back on that. So, this is just our annual payment.
Further comments or questions with regard to 710 Debt Principle? Page 30. Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to page 31, Debt Interest. 751, page 31, Debt Interest. Comments or questions? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We will now move to page 32, with the fiscal year 2026 Public Schools Budget Recommendation. And I would invite the Chair of the School Committee and other appropriate members of the team to step forward.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Erin Boucher, and I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues, Sandra Fritt, John Wensky, Rachel Sharifapour, and Rajesh Velagapudi, I am pleased to be here tonight to present and discuss with you the school department budget for the fiscal year 2026. The Shrewsbury Public Schools are in the midst of a five-year strategic plan that began in 2023 and which runs through 2027. The FY '26 budget recommendation is reflective of all the strategic plan's three commitments: educational excellence, enhanced well-being for all, and optimization of resources. We are proud of all that our students, educators, staff, and administrators have accomplished this year. A few accomplishments that I would briefly like to highlight are: one, staff professional development that took place this year, which focused on supporting positive student behavior and well-being; number two, the continued success of our RISE program for students aged 18 to 22 requiring transition services and its retail store, Maple and Main, which is a jewel in our town center; number three, the education of our expanding English learner population, which is comprised of nearly 400 students who speak 36 languages; number four, the kindergarten through sixth-grade literacy initiative, which has been implemented district-wide this year and which has reduced the number of students who are now below benchmark in reading; number five is the expansion of career and technical education offerings and career awareness initiatives at Shrewsbury High School, which is increasing the workforce readiness of Shrewsbury High School students; and number six, the tremendous success of our students that our students have experienced in a variety of co-curricular activities, including state championships and athletics, outstanding performing arts productions, concerts and art exhibitions, and accolades received by our students in national competitions in robotics, speech and debate, and the High School Business Club, DECA. Three other developments that took place this year that we would like to draw your attention to are: number one, the school committee's engagement of an educational consulting firm to assess the financial health of the district; number two, the district's partnership with Lester High School to provide Shrewsbury High School students with access to vocational education programming; and three, the successful completion of negotiations with the district's two largest unions, the Shrewsbury Paraeducators Association and Unit A of the Shrewsbury Education The school committee engaged District Management Group, an educational consulting firm that works with school districts nationwide to analyze budgets, educational budgets, and assist with strategic planning. The District Management Group gave Shrewsbury high marks. Residents of Shrewsbury can be confident that our schools are effectively managed, produce a high academic return on investment, and are currently delivered at a cost per pupil that is well below average to comparable schools in Massachusetts. DMG found that Shrewsbury Public Schools have consistently delivered strong academic outcomes, performing in the top 15% of Massachusetts school districts based on MCAS results, while spending in the bottom 15% of Massachusetts school districts. DMG found that Shrewsbury students outperform their statewide peers in MCAS scores across all grades tested, and students also demonstrate strong college matriculation and graduation This success has been achieved despite the district spending 13% less than comparable districts and 18% less than the state average. DMG also assessed risks and provided some recommendations for the district leadership and the school committee to maintain strong educational and financial footing. The three risk areas include: number one, an overreliance on non-local funds for mission-critical services; number two, evolving student needs, which may warrant additional services and costs; and three, an efficient staffing model that risks becoming stretched too thin. The District Management Group concluded that Shrewsbury Public Schools operate an efficient and effective organization that consistently delivers top results for its students. Its leaders are thoughtful stewards of community resources and are a model for communities across the Commonwealth. Another highlight of the year is the district's new partnership with Lester Public Schools with regard to vocational education. Lester Public Schools approached our district with a proposal that our districts form a partnership where a number of Shrewsbury resident students would attend Lester's High School to take part in vocational, technical, educational programs that Lester offers. As we have previously reported, the admissions policy changes at ASABET have left few to no seats available for Shrewsbury students at ASABET. State law requires students have access to vocational education, but in our part of the state, seats are very limited for students from communities like ours that are not members of vocational, technical, high school regional district. The school committee feels strongly that this new partnership is important for facilitating access for Shrewsbury students and families who seek a full vocational, technical, high school experience. Lester has added these programs and space they acquired from the former Becker College and currently has four vocational programs available in building and property management, early education and care, health assisting, and culinary arts, and they plan to add additional programming. The district is responsible for paying the cost of tuition to Lester Public Schools for this programming and for transporting students to and from Lester High School. For FY '26, the Lester vocational tuition per student is budgeted at $15,060 in comparison to ASABET's tuition, which is budgeted at $18,707. Shrewsbury resident students can still apply to ASABET for programming not offered by Lester. However, the odds of entry to ASABET remain very low due to demand from their member communities. We have 20 rising ninth graders that are currently enrolled in the Lester program for next year. There are two current ninth grade students moving to grade 10 in the fall. These students transferred to Lester in January of 2025. This is a win-win agreement between Lester and Shrewsbury, where our students are currently unable to access vocational, technical programs through ASABET. This year also saw the successful negotiation of the school committee's contracts with the district's two largest unions, the Shrewsbury Paraeducators Association and Unit A of the Shrewsbury Education Association. Given the current environment of labor management relations in Massachusetts public education, we were pleased to arrive at agreements with our paraeducators and professional educators, which maintain our financial competitiveness in the market and which are affordable. These agreements, which both sides can feel good about, underscore the collaborative nature of the relationship between the district's leadership and its educators, and will serve the district while going forward. With regard to our budget recommendation for FY '26, the school committee voted unanimously to recommend a town-appropriated fiscal year '26 budget of $90,339,987, which represents a $3,724,468 increase over the current fiscal year, or an increase of 4.3%. The budget stability provided by the 2021 operational override has been invaluable. During this budget cycle, many communities across Massachusetts are facing reductions in school personnel and programming and municipal services, where inflationary costs have outpaced those communities' revenue from local and state sources due to Proposition Two and a Half and the way that state funding is structured. For the fifth consecutive fiscal year, we will not need to make any reductions to educational staffing and programming due to the willingness of Shrewsbury voters to make a greater investment of their tax dollars through the 2021 override. While the district enjoys fiscal certainty due to the override funding, careful assessment and prudent, thoughtful use of all available funds were at the forefront of our budget consideration process. The school committee and district leadership met multiple times in budget workshops to discuss the district's needs and priorities to ensure budget recommendations that align with strategic, the strategic plan and its impact on identified areas of need, as well as accomplishing the district's educational goals. The FY '26 budget recommendation includes the following strategic personnel investments in the appropriated budget for mandated and key needs. Number one, an ELC coordinator for mandated services at Sherwood Middle School to address the increasing population of students with autism or similar disabilities in the ELC program. Number two, an adjustment counselor at Coolidge School to address student emotional and behavioral health needs. Number three, an education, an English language education teacher for mandated English language instruction services at Beal School to address, to address increased need. Number four, a RISE job coach, paraeducator to provide mandated services as the RISE student population is increasing from 22 to 26 students in this mandated program for post-high school students aged 18 to 22. And five, we are also seeking to shift 40 hours of, hours a week of literacy tutor support into the appropriated budget. This literacy tutor support was previously funded through the federal COVID grant, SIR-3. This investment is critical to the implementation of the district's new literacy curriculum for grades K through 8. Additional details to draw your attention to include that this budget includes an increase of approximately $200,000 for textbooks and instructional material, which is a restoration of the school department budget after being heavily offset through the use of ARBOR Grant funding. State circuit breaker funding offsets about 2/3 of the district's special education tuition costs and also provides an overall funding reserve of $2.2 million. The budget incorporates an estimate, an estimated $153,000 increase in vocational, technical, high school tuition due to Shrewsbury students' new access to the program at Lester High A shift of $72,000 from transportation and athletic fees to the appropriated budget due to the school committee's lowering of the district's transportation fee from $320 to $300 per student, and the athletic fee at Shrewsbury High School from $325 to $300 per student, per athletic season, to provide a measure of relief from fees that are among the highest in comparison to other districts. Strong public schools add value to our community and taxpayers. The fiscal year '26 budget recommendation reflects a few modest investments to address both mandated education requirements and key district priorities that will provide the best educational experience possible for all students. It follows the commitment made to the community that the school department will work within the promised override framework, and it reflects prudent, thoughtful use of financial resources provided by the taxpayers. On behalf of the school committee, the central office team, I would like to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to the select board, the finance committee, Mr. Mizuka, town meeting members, and the Shrewsbury community for your continued investment and commitment to public education. Thank you for your time and attention. I respectfully request your support of the school department's fiscal year '26 budget request. I'm happy to answer any questions and ask that Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi please join me at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? The school department budget as laid out on page 32.
Yes, sir. That's Fran Costello, Precinct 9. I just have a question. At first, I want to applaud the, the school district for looking at vocational education. I know that's been a sore spot, and it's great that we have the opportunity to access Lester. I just, do you have a schedule from them on the types of programs that they will be adding over the next few years? You know, I noticed HVAC and electrical, plumbing, auto, you know, those things that are in a lot of trade schools are obviously not there yet. Is there any schedule, or do you, do you have any idea?
Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you for the question, and I know that over the last several years, town meeting has been very interested in how we could expand vocational, technical opportunities for our students after losing the access to ASABET we previously had. My understanding is that Lester is going to be adding electrical potentially as soon as next year. I think they're very they're very interested in plumbing. What they are doing is building out programming. They do have the wonderful benefit of having really significant space added because of their procurement of the Becker College campus, and I believe that essentially, two things. Number one, the Commonwealth requires a very specific, extensive vetting process whenever a vocational technical school or any high school wants to add what's known as a Chapter 74 vocational technical program, so it takes some time to work through it and get it approved. And that takes time, and also, of course, you need to ramp up in terms of equipment, in terms of staff. Our understanding is that Lester, through this agreement with Shrewsbury, because they'll be receiving tuition dollars from Shrewsbury for the students who attend, that will provide them with some seed money and investment money to keep expanding their programming, and that's their intention that they believe will help their own Lester community, as well as offer opportunities for Shrewsbury students that are beyond the four programs they currently offer.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to the school department budget? Mr. Prey. We need a microphone? Thank you.
I, Precinct 1, I just had a question regarding that actual program. Have they determined how many students this could potentially have in the future?
It's my understanding that the current agreement is for 25 Shrewsbury students per year.
So even as these other pro-- sorry--
Go right ahead. One follow-up, please.
Thank you. So I guess more specifically, meaning what five-year, 10-year, 15-year plan? Are we talking, you know, 200 students max? Are we talking 80 students max? Are we talking 400 students max? And what percentage Lester, what percentage Shrewsbury for this ever-evolving fantastic tech school? Thank you.
I can speak to that as well. As Ms. Boucher mentioned, the current agreement references 25 students per year as the expectation. Currently, the next year's ninth grade would fill 20 of those 25 seats. In terms of any future agreement that could expand that, that would be between the Lester and Shrewsbury school committees. What I can tell you is historically, given up to the similar size of district we are now, when we were receiving access to ASABET, I think the largest number of students who were at ASABET at one time over the four years, nine through 12, was about 140 students total. That's in terms of-- now, not every student who applied to ASABET received admission. There were more students who might have been interested, but in the same-- now, the state is changing their policy to be more of a lottery-type system. That's what happened with us with ASABET. But I-- there's going to be a certain level of demand from Shrewsbury families, and our intent and our process has always been, here at Oak Middle School, and I commend the school committee and I commend even administrations prior to ours, we've always wanted to be sure that students who sought a vocational technical education would have access to that with a partner vocational technical school. And we try to provide good information, and our intent, whether it's with our counselors here at Oak Middle School, advising families, advising students, if it's a right fit for a student, we want students to have access to that. If it's because they want to go to a voc-tech high school because their best friend's going, that's probably not the best reason to go. But if they're interested in learning a trade, learning a technical skill, having that type, more type of hands-on experience, that's important. At the same time, when we weren't sure we'd be able to offer something like we're able to do with Lester now, we, part of our strategic plan right now that we're in the midst of, based on what we heard from you and the rest of the community, we've increased the offerings at Shrewsbury High School significantly in terms of career technical education. Not the full-blown voc-tech programming you're going to get in a voc-tech high school, but through the innovation pathways in biomedical, advanced manufacturing, some other-- whether that's career awareness or the kinds of educational experiences students are having. So students who either weren't interested in that full-blown voc-tech program, but still wanted to get more of that type of education, we're able to offer more right now at Shrewsbury High School, and that's something that we've been able to fund, frankly, in a lot of ways through philanthropic donations, grants we've received from the state, that we've been able to use of seed money to get those off the ground.
Further comments or questions? Right in the middle.
Shannon Wall, Precinct 7. Interested to understand a little more about how we're preparing for the needs of AI's impacts, both from an educational standpoint and the budget.
The school committee actually just heard a presentation from the AI Subcommittee. The district formed a study group that has examined the issue for the last six months, and a report was given at our last school committee meeting. It brought together a variety of perspectives, students, parents with specialties that work in different IT fields, and staff members as well to assess the impact of AI on, you know, teachers. So we're listening and gathering a lot of different information. No policy has been developed to it, and looking, there's a lot of state work being done at the state level as well on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Manzi.
As far as vocational is concerned--
Could you please identify yourself, Jack?
John Manzi, Precinct 10. As far as vocational education, the tuitions were $1,474 down to $654. I've worked in corrections for a long time, and we need the nitty-gritty, okay? We need the plumbing, the electrical, the HVAC. We don't need easy things. We need tough things, and that's where we're lacking, and our budget has gone from $1,400,000 to down to $654,000. Something's got to be done to get into the nitty-gritty. So--
Shrewsbury is working in corrections. Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference? Yes, right in the middle. Or do you not have your hand up? No, I'm sorry. I'm seeing something else. The gentleman in the middle.
You were right. I was ready to lift it. Cash Jane, Precinct 4, Shrewsbury High School, class of 2020. Want to say, you know, there's a reason that this town is focused so heavily on education and on funding our system. It's one of the reasons my family moved here, why I grew up here, why I'm still in town. It's, you know, every single dollar's worth it. I do have a question, though. I'm on page 20, looking at the fiscal summary, and I see that we get about $2 million from federal grants, and I see that we're looking at a reduction, a fairly modest reduction. With everything that's going on at the federal government, I don't want to get too much into it, of course, but, you know, can we--
Excuse me, sir. What page do you want again?
Page 20 of the--
Of the White Book?
Yeah, the fiscal budget report.
Very good.
Yeah, up at the top.
Yep.
Can we depend on the full $2 million-plus dollars still coming in, and if something happens, I don't know exactly what the mechanisms are, if they can be undone in any way, but, you know, if any of that federal money were to go away in a way that we're not expecting, do we have plans in place? Are we in more danger? What can we do?
Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, and congratulations on being in the town meeting, and welcome back, Ash. I think that the-- a couple of things. The way the federal budget cycle works, grant funding for the current fiscal year has essentially already been committed, so any cuts that are made in the federal budget that's under discussion right now is-- year dollars we would see from the federal government next year. What are known as federal entitlement grants that are listed here, known as the Title Grants, Title I, Title III, et cetera. The one for special education is our largest one. There's been no mention of any particular cuts that are being expected to those numbers. Obviously, we're watching that very carefully. My larger concern, frankly, for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year '26, would be if the federal budget cuts back significantly in areas that are not related to education-- where they don't have the kind of federal money they expected-- and end up making cuts at the state level that then could trickle down to the local level. That's something we're going to be looking at very carefully. As far as plans to deal with the situation where we may not get as much funding from either the federal or state government, I would call your attention to the fact that the school committee continues to hold in our circuit breaker reserve roughly the equivalent of 2.5% of the town appropriated budget, little over $2 million, as an overall reserve that could be used for unanticipated reductions in revenue. So it's something that we pay attention to. We want to be sure we are prepared. If there were a massive loss of funding, obviously, we'd have to respond to that in a different way, but losses that are smaller, we should be able to manage through, at least in the coming fiscal year, but it's something we're certainly keeping our eye on.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference? Yes.
Hi, Sandra McManus, Precinct 10. My question is about the overcrowdedness at the high school that has been there probably four years after the building was completed and has been. The NEASC, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, I believe they do an assessment, or the schools do it every 10 years. Is this overcrowding going to evolve the accreditation that the Tahai School gets?
Would the chair like to handle that, or Dr. Sawyer? Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Ms. McManus. We are actually due for our next New England Association of Schools and Colleges assessment. We just had a preliminary visit a couple of months ago, I believe, so that 10-year report is coming up. They certainly do look at those kinds of issues in terms of enrollment versus space that you have or staffing and all those elements. I don't believe that it would be anything that would be at risk for accreditation. I would expect that there'll be some commentary in their report about the amount of students, the enrollment that's there. If-- so you go to slide 20. There's some slides below the line there. So this is the graphic that we have based on the projections we had done by a demographer a couple of years ago when we asked for a capital space study that Town Meeting funded at the same time that you funded the Beal School feasibility study. And that, the demographer looked out a number of years. You can see that we're projected to be just at about 1,900 students next year. That's expected to come down a bit over time. I would say the caveat for this projection that was made, it was made just before we experienced the situation with students who were going to be leaving for ASABET, so those numbers maybe were going to chip up a little bit more, but now with the Lester agreement, they may modify to an extent. And there were some of the new developments in terms of housing in town were in the pipeline when this demographer did his work, but some of the newer ones were not in the pipeline yet, so that's something when we get an updated view at some point, we will be able to adjust. But as you can see, the school was designed for 1,475 students. It went past that amount not too long after its existence, when it began in 2002. You can see that we've been well above that for a number of years and will continue to be. The green line, or the line below that with the green type, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which was not in existence when Shrewsbury High School was built, they have certain requirements in terms of programming and expectations for square footage. If we built Shrewsbury High School today under the current MSBA regulations, the design capacity MSBA would peg it at would be 1,250 students. And what certainly we can tell you is that over time, we have had additions of programming for students with severe special needs, more demand for mandated programming for students who are learning English, a variety of types of special education, co-teaching special education, for example, that have required space. We've had to add many more, what we all call guidance counselors, now known as school counselors, adjustment counselors, positions that didn't exist, or as many of them back in 2002, that we had to reallocate space and change spaces in order to provide additional office spaces for meetings with students and so forth. We've had computer labs that we no longer use as computer labs. We had to make them classroom spaces in order to meet the demand for various classes and our class sizes. So it's certainly, and I know we'll discuss it during Article 32, but, you know, certainly as superintendent, the amount of overcrowding at the high school is something that's been affecting us for some time, and I'm pleased that the state School Building Authority has sought fit to invite us to look at a potential project. There's no project yet. There's no estimate yet. There's no plan yet, because that's the process we would go through with a feasibility study, but it is certainly one of the key things that we're looking at as part of our future planning.
I'm curious. To feed that many kids, what time do you start lunch? And does it end at 1:30 and the school bus is coming?
Dr. Sawyer?
We start in the late morning, or the sort of mid-morning, a little before 11 o'clock, and then it's done typically, I think, by about 12:30. One thing of interest is that, you know, and we're actually going to report to the school committee, I believe, at their second June meeting, part of our strategic plan was to look at our food services program, not always to look at it, but to always want to try to improve quality. But there's been a really significant shift that's happened over the past couple of years with the advent of universal no-cost school meals. Between federal funding and state funding, districts in Massachusetts no longer charge students for lunch, and that's been something that has removed stigma for a lot of students who either didn't apply for it because their families were not comfortable applying for the subsidy, when most of us would know the term free or reduced lunch, where they were subsidized. But in addition to that, just because it is convenient and because it is no cost directly to families, it's through our tax dollars, federal and state tax dollars, that it's funded, the demand for the number of lunches served has skyrocketed. And none of our serveries across the district were designed to have the amount of students coming through in such a short amount of time, because we don't have more time to add for lunches because we have to meet our minimum standards for academic time, of course, during the day. So our food services staff has done a wonderful job under challenging circumstances to be able to provide lunches to many more students every day in a compressed amount of time, but as you might imagine, that changes how we can provide meals. For example, before COVID, before the advent of universal no-cost meals, at the high school, for example, there would be a sandwich line that would be akin, kind of like a Subway, like go through the line and order what you want and make it on demand as you went through. Another counter was sort of a taco bar that'd be sort of along the lines of Chipotle, what would you like in your taco salad today? Those all have to be pre-made now, because there's just not enough time to do the sort of as-you-go-through-the-line orders. But our staff's been doing a great job. We're looking for some ideas to make sure we're giving the best quality food service we can, but with really heightened demand. So that's just particularly of interest.
Further comments or questions with regard to the school department budget? Just one second before we go to doubles. Mr. Segalnik.
John Segalnik, Precinct 2. Contractual services, there's like a million and a half dollars in contractual services. I guess the question, it's kind of a multiple-part question, what are the requirements for them, and I guess what do we accomplish with that? And can any of that be done in-house?
Dr. Sawyer?
Mr. Girardi will take--
Or Mr. Girardi?
Thank you. Chris Girardi, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. We have two types of contractual services that we budget for. We have our educational contracted services, and those are services, I think, to the point where we don't have the capacity or the expertise to provide them in-house, so we do contract those services through outside providers, typically at their going rate, and that's something that we do pay attention to, and we moderate as far as are those services viable for our school budget. We do try to provide those services in-house as much as possible, and then other administrative contracted services are the second type. And again, those are also services that, due to lack of capacity at the administrative level or lack of expertise-- level or lack of expertise, we do look for other programs to offer those services. Again, we, you know, we measure the cost. We look for providers that provide the right service for what we're looking for at the best cost. We often look for different quotes or we find different companies that we feel provide the best value for our district. As far as those services go, it really is just trying to find the right fit of service to best serve our students and our, and our staff.
Follow-up, John?
Yeah, I guess specifically, what are some of these services?
Mr. Girardi?
There's a fine follow-up. So some of our educational contract services are often through special education. We have vision, hearing, and then through some of our contracted services through administration. We do contract out different, different types of services, such as, we discussed the DMG report earlier, where we bring in a financial consultant. That would be something that would land under our administrative contractual services. But educational, they are often kind of high-focus, special education areas in which we don't have those folks in-house to provide those services.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Further comments or questions with reference to the school department budget? Yes, sir.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. I just have a quick clarification. And Ms. Boucher, you mentioned that the union negotiation was complete. On page six, it says it's still under negotiation, but is that actually complete?
It was just, the memorandum of understanding, I believe, was just executed last week or two. Yeah, so.
And does this budget?
With Unit A.
So does this budget represent that, or the numbers?
Yes.
They are, okay, good. And just one follow-up, if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question on those school lunches, and it's just maybe ignorance. Is it state law that we have to provide free lunches or can you do a means program, a test or anything like that? Is that against the law or?
Mr. Girardi?
Thank you. School district is required to provide one free lunch and one free breakfast to any student who, who wants it each day. We do not charge a minimal cost or it's a free lunch. There are additional items that a student can purchase beyond a school lunch. So that's why we consider it to be our à la carte.
Further comments or?
Okay. So as far as reimbursement goes, there's a reimbursement rate that the state provides per meal. There's a rate for breakfast and a rate for lunch. And we submit reports each month that shows every meal that we serve students, and they reimburse us on those meals. Each year, we do set our meal rate to mirror the state reimbursable rate so that we can get the maximum reimbursement on, on those meals.
Further comments or questions with reference? Yes, Mr. Garabedian.
Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2. Earlier in your discussion, you had mentioned negotiations with Unit A of the Shrewsbury Education Association. Who is a member of Unit A? And if there's a Unit A, is there a Unit B and C? And what kind of employees are they covering?
So Unit A is the professional educators. That would be our teachers. Unit B is the assistant principals and the athletic director.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to the school department budget? I'm not seeing, I am seeing one follow, anybody new? Let me just say that. No, I'm not seeing anyone new, so I'm going to go back to Mr. Garabedian.
Considering the present financial status?
Charlie, please reintroduce yourself in your precinct.
Oh, sorry. Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2. Considering your present financial situation in the school, or department and operating the schools properly, to predict the future is a difficult thing, but can you give us any indication whether or not you would be coming to the town for an override? If so, how soon would that be? And how much money would you be looking at? I know that's a difficult question to answer, but I'm just trying to get a feeling for what the future is holding for us as taxpayers.
Would the chair like to deal with that or Ms.?
The select board like to take that one?
Is this a lateral to Mr. Mizikar? Mr. Mizikar?
So the trajectory that we're on right now would provide the override that was passed in 2021 would last for seven years. That's three years beyond what our original expectations were. That would mean that we would look to ask an override question to be effective for fiscal year 2027. Excuse me, fiscal year 2028 in the fall of 2026. So this, not this coming fall, but the following fall likely asks the question. That's what the current financial model show. You know, we look at that each and every year, and once we get through this budget process and turn the corner, we'll revisit that, but that's what the projections show right now.
Further comments or questions with reference to the school department budget? I'm not hearing or seeing any hands on the school department budget. Thank you very much. We will now move to page, hold on, hold on a second. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Remington?
Dave Remington, Precinct 9. I have a comment about the Article 6.
Go ahead.
So let me talk about Article 6. I voted no for this on the board, and I suggest us vote no tonight, and I'll tell you why. In 2021, we voted for the override. And that was great. We needed that. And there was an agreement made where maximums were set on how much our, our increase into the budget will go up every year. There was a caveat that up to a half percent more if certain conditions were met, it could go up. Every year, we spent more than those maximums. We use the caveat. So we have a increasing budget because every year the budget gets bigger because you've spent more than the maximum, and then it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So as we're going on, we're only taking that two and a half percent cap, but the gap between what we're spending and the two and a half percent gets bigger and bigger because the velocity of our spending gets bigger and bigger. So what does that mean for us? If we continue this path and if the override happens, last time the override happens was $750 more for everybody per taxes. It's going to be more for this one because we have a higher budget. If the school department does have a debt exclusion and we pass it based on the current model, we're using $8.05 per million debt, 100 million would be another $800. So between 800 and 800, our $285 taxes increase this year. You go up five years, we're over $3,000 more per household average tax increase. But that doesn't include the Selco is building a building, and we know when they build a building, it's just not cheap. All that money's going to come from your electric rates. The DPW has money coming to it through its increases of 5% this year. So in just a few years, there's a lot of money being put on the taxpayer. The other path this could lead us to is because of those extra taxes, people unwilling to have debt exclusions or overrides. And if we hit this override and it does not pass, the schools, public safety, our, our infrastructure, the people that are in this town, everything gets just cut between May and the end of June. And because we're going at this higher velocity, we hit harder because we use the extra money to buy stuff instead of putting into our defensive funds. And that's just the philosophy of this model. So we had a tri-board meeting, and we had the finance committee, the school committee, and the select board meet. And I talked about why can't we just spend the maximum? And there was several people on the committees who said, well, as long as the town meeting is voting on it and passing these budgets, this is what they want. So that, so I'm asking us to vote no, not because of the budget more, I want it to be talked about in the future, that we look at what we're doing, what is the impact of this extra money on our, on our friends, our neighbors, and on us? Because when you say, well, how much is enough, it will never be enough. And I say that, but I want to also say this, we voted as town meeting members every year on that budget, and the town executed the budget we gave them. So it's our responsibility, if five years from now you're sitting down and going, well, how did my taxes go up $3,000? It's because you voted on it. You said yes. And so I just bring that up because the reason I'm voting no is I want to be able to have a conversation with the other boards about this model. Can we modify it? And where do we look to say, okay, maybe we could have less stuff this year? Maybe you don't need 100 employees or whatever it is. Maybe we can have a little less stuff, take the burden off the taxpayer. So I'm asking to vote no. So this year, it goes back to the town manager. It's going to be a very, very slight, if any, changes because they only have until the end of June to pass a budget. It's a very short time period. But what it does is, in the future, we can have a conversation because this is our last solvent year. Fiscal year 2027, which we're going to vote on the next time we meet next, I'm sorry, two times, one year from now, we don't have enough money projected in our income to pay our bills. So we use our defensive funds, we use the override stabilization fund. So we're at the point right now where we don't have enough money to pay our bills next year, next fiscal year. So just keep that in mind. That's my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Remington's comments, but I disagree with a lot of it. The town has spent within the provisions that were laid out by the school committee and the select board each and every year. We have not exceeded any of the, the maximums. If you look at the schools' budget for the last two years, there was additional room within the expenditure models that could have been introduced and presented that were not. This budget and the prior budget were both well under those caps. This year is about 4.3%. Last year was about 4.1%. Those are the, those are under the first threshold. I'm not sure where the $3,000 estimate comes from. It's not a figure that I would agree to. To be honest with you, preliminary calculations for me is about half of that. I don't see how to get to $3,000. We implemented expenditure-side limitations that has resulted in putting almost $8 million into the override stabilization fund. Those funds, if there wasn't diligence in place and a plan put in place, would have likely been introduced and spent in prior years. The model that we have has a finite timeline. That is the restrictions of Proposition 2.5 that every municipality faces in the Commonwealth. And being able to get seven years out of the override is, is something that I think is, well, it's almost twice as long as we committed to this body and every resident for. So I appreciate the, the thought and the comments of spending less. I just disagree with some of the facts that were, were presented and associated with future cost increases.
Town meeting members, I draw your attention to page 33. We have one section left under the operating budget, 159, operating support. Any comments or questions regarding operating support? Are you, Tony, are you holding your book up, Tony? Do you want to be recognized? Yeah, go ahead.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct 4. So I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Finance Committee Remington's comments. I think that he hit a very important point. Shrewsbury, for well over three decades, ranked in the state of Massachusetts for its average single-family tax bill at 135 or above, meaning if you're number one, you don't like it because you have a $25,000 a year tax bill. The higher the number, of course, the better. Since 2020, we've moved that number down to 90, 91, 89. We have never been there in the history of Shrewsbury. So we need to make a decision on, are we going to continue to be a socio-economically diverse town or are we going to become a different type of town? It's, I think that he's hit a very valid point. It's time to really consider this. Where the issues are, it's hard for people to, you know, decide if we need a new employee in the town manager's office or, you know, an increase in the budget here or there. But the goals are something that we can decide on, and we can do the best we can to achieve those goals. The select board will have to determine if the people that are in place are the correct people and can achieve those goals or not. But I'm very concerned that the residents of Shrewsbury are anticipating what was in the past is going to be what's in the future. And as Mr. Remington just articulated, that is not, is not what's going to happen. The town manager just spoke about this four-year commitment to an override. Well, that's a self-imposed number. You know, most 80 to 90% of the town residents know nothing about that. It wasn't a separate vote. It was something that was tied into the last override in 2021, which, by the way, was the largest override in the entire state that year by a long shot. And that's why our average single tax bill is where it's at. And I think we need to have a lot more discussion about the average single-family tax bill, where we stand, and, and explain to people the downsides, not just that everything is peaches and roses and it has to be this way. So I applaud Mr. Remington bringing up that conversation. Thank you.
Right in the middle there. Yes.
Barb Trudell, Precinct 7. This is my first time at this august body, but I have to say, I was in high school when Proposition 2.5 passed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I remember distinctly a conversation with my father when he explained what it meant. And I asked him, so what would happen if the cost of doing business in town rises above 2.5%? And he said, oh, well, you just have to make a reasoned argument and the town will vote for it. My response to him was, I don't know of too many people who want to raise their taxes. And he said, oh, you're, you're, no, you're being cynical. Well, it seems as though I was not cynical, I was prescient. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Mizikar for explaining that this town gets inordinate value out of every dollar, that I cannot believe, when I'm looking over this information, as I have in the past, but was not a voting member, I am just astounded at how well Shrewsbury's finances are managed. So while we can certainly have discussions, I would really hope that we would not have scare tactics about our taxes blossoming and getting out of control, when in fact, for many, many years, Shrewsbury had a distinct advantage of having much lower taxes than every other community. So I'd like people to keep that in mind, especially those who are newer to town. I've only been here 30 years, so I'm still a young upstart. Okay? So that, that is my comment, and I want to say thank you to the, to the finance committee and to also to.
Further? Come on, guys. Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. As long as we're talking about the budget, effective budget on, on tax bills, I'll talk about my own, which is a fact. And in a little over four years, I've seen my, my property tax bill go up 52%. That's about 9% a year. And in the last quarter, it went up 16%. And it may come as a shock to a lot of people that when you retire, your pension doesn't go up 9% and your social security doesn't go up 9%. So I'm sure that I, that we're getting a good bargain for our money, but very rapidly, people will not be able to pay for that bargain. Thank you.
Right in the middle. Well, we, we're still, nobody wants to talk about operating support, huh? Okay, we've gone through the budget. A motion has been made to move the question, is there a second? Motion has been seconded. Therefore, we will now take a vote on ending debate and then moving to. Therefore, we will now take a vote on ending debate and then moving to the vote on Article 6. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to a vote on Article 6. All those in favor of Article 6, the op-
Standing count.
What's that?
I request a standing vote.
Are there seven people with, with you?
Yep.
Okay, there's seven. Okay, then we know this routine. I would ask that everybody sit down right now, please. And we will ask the tellers to get in position. And in a moment, I will ask, don't stand up, but I will ask everyone who's in favor to stand. The tellers will take that hand count, report to the clerk. I will then ask you to sit. We'll do the same thing for the no. Okay? We will now have a standing vote on the motion to move the question.
36.
Is that it? Okay. Please take your seats. I'll make sure everybody is seated.
6.
6.
15.
You may be seated. Can I see it? Too blind to look at it. Town meeting members, on this matter, 125 in the affirmative, 54 in the negative, the motion carries. We will now move to Article 6. All those in favor of Article 6, the operating budget, shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to Bundle 7, Articles 7, 8, and 9. Yeah? Oh, yes?
I request a standing vote.
Are there seven people wishing to stand with her to cause a standing vote? Please stand if you want to have a standing vote. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Okay, we'll now go to a standing vote. On Article 6. Okay, are you all set, Madam Clerk? Okay. Would all of those in favor of Article 6 please rise and remain standing?
35.
32.
29.
You may take your seats. And now would all of those who would like to be recorded no please rise.
9.
8.
Thank you. You may be seated. Town meeting members, on this item, Article 6, 149, the affirmative, 21 in the negative, the motion carries. We're now moving on to Bundle 7, Articles 7, 8, and 9.
Printed motion under Articles 7, 8, and 9.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Articles 7, 8, and 9 by a vote of 9 to 0.
Mr. Mizikar.
Where are we? So Article 7, 8, and 9 raised funds from a variety of sources outside of the tax levy to reduce and minimize the impact of all expenditures on the tax rate.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 7? Turn on the mic, please.
Hello? Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Article 8 explains that the money from the light department is based on the plant value. But what is Article, what is, where does the sum of 305,000 come, what's that based on?
Mr. Kirk has asked a question on Article 8. Mr. Mizikar.
So it's the same thing. It's the plant value of the fiber system within the community.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 7, 8?
Good evening. Mark Adler, Precinct 1. On 7 and 8, the funds coming from Selco, the pilot, the money that's coming based on the value of the plant times a tax rate, I seem to think years ago was more of a negotiation between the select board and Selco. And now it is just the plant. And does the plant just mean the real estate? Does it also, and you mentioned the fiber, so maybe it also includes the personal property. But does it also include the trucks and all of that equipment? Because those are government-owned, so I assume that they are also, would be subject to a pilot.
Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, it includes all assets of Selco, including things like trucks.
And was it years ago, and maybe you don't have that with you, a negotiation, and now it's just down to the plant?
It was a little bit different in years past with, again, what was cable TV and is now primarily fiber being the odd entity out and contributing a lot more than it should have been, thus making the competitiveness in the marketplace much more challenging. And as we've had over the past few years, outside private entities come in to try to service it in an industry that's much more penetrable now with the internet and various streaming platforms. We feel this is a better business approach.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions to Article 7, 8, or 9? Mr. Kirk.
On Article 9-
Would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Christopher Burke, Precinct 1. On Article 9, the sum of 7, 8, and 9 is about $1.5 million. And I was just wondering, since that number, figure has remained consistent with the previous years, what determines the $1.5 million? Why is, is that a sum, sum that's required? Or is that just a number somebody chose arbitrarily?
Mr. Mizikar.
It's, it's just the traditional number that we've used to offset the tax rate over the years. It's not demanded externally by any source.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Bundle 7, Articles 7, 8, or 9?
Caroline May Cumber, Precinct 9. Sort of just a follow-up to that last question. So that $1,000,000 is not indexed for inflation in any way? I'm just looking at, like, my own personal property taxes have gone up 50% in the past, I would say, five, six years. Why hasn't this $1.5 million gone up to, like, $3 million?
Mr. Mizikar.
There's an opportunity to do that. And now that we've adjusted the Selco pilots, those two categories to be based upon plant value, it will increase as the plant value increases over time.
Further comments or questions with reference to Articles 7, 8, or 9? Not hearing or seeing anyone, and this requiring a simple majority? All those in favor of Bundle 7, Articles 7, 8, and 9 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Bundle 8, which includes Articles 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
I move the motion under Articles 10, 11, 12, 13, and the printed substitute motion under Article 14.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Articles 10, 11, 12, and 13 by a vote of 9 to 0, and the updated Article 14 by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
These articles set forth the annual operating budgets for four different aspects of the Department of Work, Department of Public Works. These four areas include the operations of solid waste, sewer water, and stormwater. They're their own distinct business lines, and their revenues, which are primarily generated through fees, are used to cover the direct expenses and are tracked outside of the general fund. The additionally, funding that is received from Selco for cable franchise services through Selco Stream subscribers is provided for in the final article. These fees are dedicated to the operations of public access programming on 4 HD channels. The town is currently under contract with Shrewsbury Media Connection, a nonprofit organization, to provide those services to the community.
Town meeting members, where we have a substitute motion under 14, I want to make sure we take the time to walk through each of the articles. Any comments or questions on Article 10? Article 11? Article 12? Article 13? And the substitute motion for Article 14? Any comments or questions?
Mr. Kirk, Precinct 1. Is, is, are we paying $388,000 for, for recording and broadcasting this, these meetings? Is that what, what's the money going for?
Mr. Mizikar.
It goes, it goes to those types of services. I'm not saying that SMC doesn't necessarily spend it every year. They reserve those funds. It can only be used for that in the future. But that is the primary cost of those operations.
Okay. Further comments or questions with reference to Articles 10, 11, 12, 13, and the substitute motion for 14? Not hearing or seeing any. I will call for a vote on Bundle 8, Articles 10 through 14. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will now move to Bundle 9, Articles 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
I move the printed motion under Articles 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Articles 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 by a vote of 9 to 0.
Mr. Mizikar.
So Article 15 proposes to utilize $7,756 in free cash to satisfy the town's obligations under the general laws, Chapter 41, Section 100B, to pay out-of-pocket medical costs for disabled police officers and firefighters. There are currently three individuals that are covered under this article. Article 16 would add $20,000 to the insurance trust fund. The current balance of the insurance trust fund is $39,412. This trust fund pays deductible obligations for claims that the town is obligated to pay. There are currently no pending play, claims, but our annual deductible is in aggregate just, or just around $60,000. Article 17 proposes to add $300,000 into the town's general stabilization fund. This is the town's general rainy day fund. It would be used to overcome any significant unforeseen financial challenge in the future. The current balance of the general stabilization fund is $7,971,686. Adding $300,000 to, $300,000 to it will keep it at the policy level of 5% of the municipal and school operating budgets. Article 18 proposes to deposit sewer funds into the sewer stabilization fund, $100,000. The current balance is $1.9 million. Article 19 proposes to put $100,000 into the water stabilization fund from water fees. Current balance is $818,521. Article 20 sets the annual spending limits for revolving accounts in accordance with the general laws in Article 22 of our general bylaws. This provides, this sets the annual expenditure limit for the Council on Aging Transportation Fund at $75,000 and the Donahue Rowing Center at $250,000. Article 21 would be to accept funding from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the repair and improvement of public streets, commonly known as Chapter 90 funds. It is currently estimated that the town will receive $1,484,000 in Chapter 90 funds for fiscal year '26. And finally, Article 22 would be to transfer $18,000 to the sale of cemeteries, to the sale, from the sale of cemetery lots, accounts. Annually, this meeting transfers these funds to offset salary and expenses associated with the ongoing operation and embellishment of the cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article 15? Okay, fine. Then stop right there to your right. Hello?
Sorry. Nope.
Nope, you're okay, too. All right. How about 15? Anybody interested in 15? No? Okay, we'll go to 16. 16. Any takers? We'll go to 17. We have a taker on 17.
Louise Gurin, Precinct 8. These stabilization accounts, are these interest-earning accounts?
Mr. Mizikar.
Very low risk because we don't want to lose any of the money that we deposit in since it's such an important need if we have an emergency, but they do earn interest.
Comments or questions with reference to 17? 20? Article 20. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Patricia Minton, Precinct 7. $75,000 for the transportation funds for the Council on Aging. What does that include?
Mr. Mizikar.
So it's the vans that are operated that provide services to seniors, to take them to community events, medical visits, shopping, things like that. The funds are raised through any fees and charges that are issued for those rides, and it is used to cover the costs. So it's self-sufficient.
Article 20? I'm sorry. Yes. Any questions on Article 20? Yes, sir.
Rishi Faurer, Precinct 7. Could you explain-
Could you explain the Donahue Rowing Center expenditure, please?
Mr. Mizuka?
Sure. So the town receives funds by charging a rent and usage fees for the Donahue Rowing Center, and these funds are used to maintain that facility.
Y'all set, sir? Y'all set? Ms. McManus?
Sandy McManus, Precinct 10.
Just a second.
Sandy McManus, Precinct 10. Back to the, the buses. Are they well-used? When I see them, they don't look like there's anybody on them.
Mr. Mizuka?
Yeah, they, they're all well-used, uh, booked almost each and every day to capacity. So if you see it, you know, it, it's taking a senior somewhere. I can't speak to the capacity when, when you see it, but again, we, we take people to, to doctor's visits, uh, to, you know, if they have certain, um, disabilities, and even if they're not seniors, we take them to their jobs. They're, they're used each and every business day.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 20? Mr. Manzi?
These, uh, chapter, the Chapter 90 funds, it's like downtown Ukraine in Shrewsbury, okay? When are we going to start the repaving? Because it's just horrendous driving in town.
Mr. Mizuka? The question regarding Article 21.
So the fiscal year '26 paving improvement program will begin within the, the next few weeks. We'll be doing Floral Street, Roman Drive, Hialeah Drive, Oak Street, Amberly Lane, Hunter Circle, Karen Avenue, Birch Lane, and Pratt Lane.
Further comments or questions on Article 20, 21, or 22? I think I see a hand right there. Yes, yes.
Caroline McCumber, Precinct 9. I just want to make sure I'm understanding Article 20 correctly. So it looks like we've got about $32,000 in that fund, but we're trying to authorize a spending limit of $250,000 for the care and maintenance of the rowing center. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly and not looking at it wrong.
Sure. So you're looking at the balance at a snapshot in time. Over the course of the year, we receive rents and expend for maintenance. And if we have to take any major capital repair or improvement on, uh, we would be able to expend up to the $250,000, but it's always subject to the availability of funds that we have in the account.
Okay. And then on Article 21, um, who decides, and I guess how do we prioritize which roads get repaved when? Like, is it citizens putting in a request, like, hey, come look at my road? Or is it, do we just have, like, a spreadsheet? We kind of go down the list?
Mr. Mizuka?
I mean, I can start, and it can be supplemented by the DPW team, but we have a pavement management index that we use that's a numerical-based system that grades all roads within the community, and it looks at, you know, frequency of usage, traffic, uh, conditions, time of last repair, and we prioritize those decisions based upon the available funds.
Did I see a card behind Mr. Segalnik over there? If I didn't, then Mr. Segalnik.
John Segalnik, Precinct 2. Uh, this is in regards to Article 21. In the past, the, the amounts were usually in the $900, $950,000 range, and now it's almost up to $1,505,000, which means the state's giving us a lot more money. I guess I'm presuming, is that the result of the billionaire's tax? And if so, how much of it is attributed to that tax?
Mr. Mizuka?
Yes, it is attributed to the fair share amendment, or the, um, millionaire's tax, and that, that difference, uh, from the traditional $986,000, so, uh, almost $500,000 is distributed to that.
Further comments or questions with reference to 20, 21, 22? Do I see anyone? Yes. Just one second.
Deb Nelson, whoo, Deb Nelson, Precinct 7. On Article 22, there is, um, language that says for the care of the cemetery. On a personal level, I can say that I have lived in this town for 58 years. Hate to admit my age, but it's the truth. And, um, having family members from multi-generations, I am in the Shrewsbury cemetery, um, relatively frequently. I can say there has been a steady decline on its appearance, and I hope that we don't forget, knowing that we are building a new cemetery, which is quite needed, and needed relatively soon, that we do not forget about the care about the existing cemetery. It looks terrible. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to 22? Article 22? Not hearing, or, yes?
On 22, Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Uh, just a clarification. The motion reads for the care improvement embellishment and enlargement of the cemetery, but the text says transfers funds to offset salary expenses associated. So is it, is it care improvement embellishment or salaries?
Mr. Mizuka?
It's, it's both. We use salaries to do those things and contract services for those activities.
Okay, thanks.
Town meeting members, any further questions for Articles 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, or 22? Not hearing or seeing anyone. I will call for a vote on Bundle 9, Articles 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will now move to Article 23.
I move the printed motion under Article 23.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend Article 23 by a vote of 9 to 0.
Mr. Mizuka?
Historically, this article has allocated funding in conjunction with funding received from other towns and/or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to fund weed control or other lake improvements on town water bodies. This year, there are sufficient funds on hands for FY '26 activity. Thus, this article is requested to be defeated. I do want to note that, um, this is likely just a one-year occurrence, and we'll be back, um, as we have been in years past, to request funding, um, you know, each and every year in the future to, um, cover the cost of water quality improvements. But this year, we have a sufficient amount of funds on hands, and we request defeat.
Questions or comments with reference to Article 23? Mr. Kirk?
Chris, Chris, Precinct 1. I don't know whether this is strictly relevant, but there's been a problem with the sewer line along Belmont Street in Worcester, backing up and dumping sewage under some conditions. And I was wondering if Worcester has made any headway in the solving of that problem.
Mr. Mizuka, do you have any Worcester updates?
They're, they're working on it. I could go into a lot of details, but, um, it's, it is a, it's an initiative that they're undertaking, and DEP has watchful eye over.
Okay. I hope I live long enough to see them solve it. Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 23? Not hearing or seeing any? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
There we go. Thank you. It is defeated. Article 24?
I move the printed motion under Article 24.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 24 by a vote of 9 to 0.
Mr. Mizuka?
Article 24 proposes the use of $350,000 in free cash to fund counseling and education services under a contract with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services.
Comments or questions with reference to the article? Ms. Harrington? Did I do that?
Maureen Harrington, Precinct 1. Just have a clarifying question regarding the SYFS budget. Um, one, what percentage of the, of this funding is of the SYFS total budget? And two, follow-up question would be, um, how much did we allocate last year in terms of, um, allotment of money for the SYFS? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizuka?
So this is about a third of the Shrewsbury portion of the SYSF budget. And we're verifying, but I believe we used $325,000 in free cash last year, and $25,000 from American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Could you go into detail on what the 350 covers? Like, what's it paid for?
Mr. Mizuka?
So the vast, the, the largest portion of it funds two mental health clinicians that are solely dedicated to Shrewsbury residents. They don't service any non-residents. Um, if you're familiar with mental health services right now in the Commonwealth and across the country, there's extraordinary wait times. The benefit of this funding means that SYSF services are able to be rendered within 30 days right now. It's a very short timeframe. It also covers other programs that benefit public safety officers within the community during traumatic events, and admin, general administrative costs associated with those two primary buckets of funds.
Follow-up?
I think it, oh, there it goes. Um, do the, do those folks that we fund, are they mental health counselors that can charge for their services? In other words, do they, I know SYFS takes insurance for other services. Do these people can, where Massachusetts has coverage for, you know, anybody that needs it, and I'm sure that there's a, we could also pay for people that couldn't afford it, but do they charge insurance if you have it? Mass Health or anything else?
Not to Shrewsbury residents. Someone can clarify in the room if, if I'm incorrect, but I don't believe they charge to Shrewsbury residents. No.
No.
That's your answer.
Oh, I'm just curious why not? I guess.
Thank you. Did I see a card up over here in Area C in the middle?
Thank you. Julie Boris, Precinct 6. And this is just a clarifier, I think. If every child in Massachusetts needs to have health insurance, and there is mass health available to those who don't have it, why are they not billing for insurance for therapy services? Like, the contract requires timely billing of third-party payers. So I just don't understand why they're not billing for that.
Mr. Mizuka?
Because it's funded through this appropriation as a service to residents.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 24?
Caroline McCumber, Precinct 9. Kind of a twofold question. One is, I know we already have a lot of counselors available through the schools, so I'm wondering if this is kind of a duplication of effort, something that we're already paying for through the school budget? Um, and then the second piece, what was the second piece of my question? Who originally decided that we needed these two full-time people for the residents? Or, like, have we evaluated if they're still necessary? Like, what's the usage? How many people are using it? That type of thing.
Mr. Mizuka?
I'd be happy to provide you the data associated with this contract. We receive it on a quarterly basis from SYSF. Um, if you reach out to me, I'd be happy to send that over to you. Uh, they're booked 40 hours a week, each of them. There's, there's, like I said, there's still a approximately 30-day wait period. So after they see all their, um, patients on a monthly basis, there's still, you know, 30-day wait period, um, or regular basis. And this has evolved over time, given increasing demands. Just about three to five years ago, it was about a six-month wait period, and that's when we increased support to SYSF to increase licensed, uh, social workers that are available to residents.
Right in the middle. Uh, he's coming down.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. I actually work in the behavioral health space, so I feel like I have something that I can offer to this conversation to help people understand why it's important to fund a position like this. When you bill fee for service, if a person does not show up, you do not get paid. To retain talented people who work in this space, you need to offer them a living wage, which guarantees that they're going to get paid regardless of whether or not people show up to provide the services. If we did not pay that, there's no reason why the very talented people that work at SYFS would continue to hold those positions when they could go somewhere else, where they could get that wage paid by someone else. My personal, my family has been personally impacted by SYFS. I believe it's one of the most valuable organizations that we have in our community, not just because I work in the industry, but because I'm a parent, because I'm a sister, I'm a daughter, I'm a friend, just like all of you, or all of those things in your lives. We all know someone that's been impacted by mental health, by the mental health crisis, particularly as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic that the children in our schools suffered. And so questioning the need to provide these services to vulnerable children and families in our community, I don't know, it hurts a little bit as your neighbor. So just something I want you guys to consider.
Thank you. Did I see a yellow card right on the aisle here?
Lindsay Heffernan, Precinct 1. I want to echo the comments of, of my colleague. My family needed SYFS services before we had this transfer, and their waitlist was nearly a year long at that point in time. The idea that I want to live in a community that cares about people who have needs, and I really appreciate that this is in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, guys, we don't, we're no clapping up back there.
Hi, yes, Jennifer Partial, Precinct 10. I just want to echo Lindsay and Bridget's comments with SYFS's value. Um, family mem, my family members have used SYFS. The waits were longer. The idea that 30 days is the wait right now is fantastic, because I called them Friday for additional support. And I also want to say, in regards to the question about Shrewsbury schools, and do the counselors there have enough time to see these children? The answer is no. Um, at least a couple years ago, when we needed services, um, they spoke with my child twice, as opposed to weekly sessions with SYFS. So I urge you to vote for Article 24. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 24?
Martha Dear, Martha Deering, Precinct 4. I was on the board of this organization before it was Youth and Family Services, and we used to have to come to this body and beg for just $1,000, $2,000. We, we hung in there that entire time. We raised funds, and please note that this is just a third of what that particular organization needs. They raise the rest of the funds. I am in this treatment field as well. The, the demand for services now is outrageous, and the fact that we have two people who can actually see somebody within 30 days? I have clients who are trying to see a physician, and they've got a three- or four-month wait. I have a friend who's a practicing nurse clinician in this field, and she can't even take anybody. And she just started. We need these people. We need the work they do, and thank you all for continuing this program.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 24? Are we ready to take a vote?
Hi. Melanie Petrucci, Precinct 1. I have a quick question for the school department, if I could ask?
Of course.
Um, is there's a, a relationship or some sort of contractual agreement between, um, SYFS and the schools for counseling services?
Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Ms. Petrucci. Uh, we have a longstanding relationship with Shrewsbury and Family Services that is very collaborative. is very collaborative. We recently actually co-hosted with them a, some authors and Mr. Kalin indeed, for a panel discussion at the high school around some of the issues facing families today. We have had interns from Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services serve as, to provide some counseling services under the offices of our own counselors in the school to increase the amount of students who can be seen. We also have had in the past a variety of pieces between vaping cessation services, after-school providers, counselors helping at the high school level. And we are in conversation with Mr. Kalin to try to think about how we can continue to strengthen this partnership going forward. One thing that I think is important to clarify is that school counselors, whether that's a school adjustment counselor, a school psychologist, our school social worker, really, our school social worker is probably the only position that really gets into things that might be uniquely a home dynamic. Our counselors are not expected to, nor should they be providing the kind of counseling that's not related to the student's experience in school itself. So it's a little bit different where a Shrewsbury Youth and Family Service counselor working with a family is going to provide more of a direct family counseling in terms of things that might be happening in the dynamic of the home or outside of school issues. Obviously, there's some overlap, and we have lots of situations where our counselors and counselors from SYFS have been able to collaborate to assist a student and their family. Our Director of Counseling Services and Mental Health recently made a presentation to the school committee with this year's statistics so far. I want to just let you know that last year in our district, and this is something where we've added a number of positions post-COVID. Some of the investment of your dollars through the override to add positions was to respond to the mental health crisis that had emerged prior to COVID and was amplified by COVID significantly. We added a significant number of school adjustment counselors. We added our school social worker, which used to be a contracted service, but we had enough demand that we felt it was more cost-effective to have our own person. We added, we doubled the number of board-certified behavior analysts who provide clinical support to students and families experiencing significant behavioral health issues. And last year, the number of encounters that our adjustment counselors, school psychologists, clinical coordinators had was 30,755. That would be affecting 1,753 different students. That's about 30% of our population. Some of those might have special education services that involve counseling every week. Some might be check-ins on a less frequent basis. Sometimes they're intensive counseling that happens due to a certain situation or issue that ultimately can be faded out. But it's certainly something that we want to be sure we're providing everything we can to support our students' mental and social, emotional well-being at school. So I appreciate the question, but SYFS is an excellent partner with us, and we look forward to that continued partnership.
I have, follow-up?
Follow-up.
May I move the question, please?
No, no, we don't do the ricochet shot.
Oh, okay.
You ask a question, that's fine.
Okay.
We will now, I will then, thank you very much, unless you have a follow-up to the question.
No.
Okay, very good. Now I will simply ask the body, any further questions with reference to Article 24? If there are not any further questions, then we'll move to a vote. I don't see anyone. So we will now move for a vote on Article 24. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 25.
Move the printed motion under Article 25.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 25 by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
So Article 25 is the General Capital Improvement Plan. This year, we proposed to use $2,24,210 from free cash to front a variety of different improvements that you see listed on Page 44 within the book.
Comments or questions with reference to the article? Article 25. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir, right in the middle.
Ed Bolter, Precinct 1. I have a question for the chief, if he's in attendance. I just want to know what the criteria is for determining when a new cruiser is needed.
Mr. Mizuka.
Looks like there's four of them up right now.
Throw you to the chief.
Chief of Police, yes, sir.
If you could scooch over to the well chief, so that everyone can hear your response.
So as far as the fleet management, we work with our quartermaster and also the fleet management team with the town. And usually, it's about 120, 230,000 miles is when we turn in a cruiser, which is usually about three years. We run them 24/7, so they wear out pretty quickly.
Very good, thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 25? Yes.
The, what, for the fire, what apparatus are we replacing? And again, with this question, if this is a new truck, will it require a new firehouse that would fit in our current firehouses?
Mr. Mizuka.
Sure. So this is a slightly different approach that we've taken in previous years. The cost of fire apparatus is really mind-boggling. A fire engine now costs over $1.1, $1.2 million. So what we're doing through this proposal is setting aside $250,000 to be used towards a future purchase. And if we do that every year, it would meet with our replacement cycle for all the equipment that we use, probably with the exception of the, of the tower itself, which is, you know, probably double that cost. So we're trying to save up enough money regularly over time to prevent having to borrow or shock the system and consume the entire capital improvement plan on one piece of equipment.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 25?
Thanks, Brian.
Yes.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Just what's Ray Stone Post Improvement?
Mr. Mizuka.
Sure. The Ray Stone Post is a town-owned building at the intersection of School Street and Main Street, and it is being renovated into the home of the Recreation Department. And these final costs will complete that project, allowing for office and programming space.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 25? Anybody new? This time around, Mr. Kirk, the next new.
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. What is rack-body tuck replacement? That's...
Mr. Mizuka.
Is that a typo?
No, no, it's not. It's a, it's a type of utility vehicle with, you know, shelving and space to store tools and equipment on it.
I'm sorry, is the word tuck supposed to be truck?
Oh, yes. I apologize. I thought you meant rack.
Should be truck.
It's a rack truck.
Okay, all right.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Got a new person on the file left here.
I just have a question. Could you tell me a little more about this library self-check unit and security gate line item?
Mr. Mizuka. Would you like the Director of Libraries, please come down to the microphone, so everyone can hear the response.
There are about eight to 10 self-checkout stations at the library, and they are over 10 years old and have to be replaced. The, the security gates are at the entrance to the library, both the entrances and the bathrooms, and that is to prevent items being taken out of the library. So we have security gates. That equipment has to be replaced.
All set? Very good. I think we had a follow-up from Ms. Minton.
Going back to Ray Stone, oh, Patricia Minton, Precinct 7. Going back to Ray Stone Post, where are these, are these recreation people going to park? Because as far as I know, and I'm familiar with it, there's no spaces at Ray Stone Post.
Mr. Mizuka.
Sure. So there is limited parking there on-site, and they'll use the lot across School Street at Dean Park.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 25? Not hearing or seeing any, I will call for a vote on Article 25. Simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 25 is adopted. We will now move to Bundle 13, Articles 26, 27, and 28, and these require a two-thirds vote.
I move the printed motions under Articles 26, 27, and 28. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Articles 26, 27, and 28 by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
These three articles represent the capital improvement plans associated with the enterprise utility accounts. Various items are being proposed for either ongoing capital repairs or improvements across water, sewer, and stormwater.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 26? Article 27. Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. On 26, the source of, what's the source of the money for the inflow and filtration fund and the current balance in that fund? And what's it spent for? And also, what is a CIP reserve?
Mr. Mizuka.
I don't think I caught all that. So inflow and infiltration is when water is able to penetrate our sewer system, and we're forced to treat it at the sewer treatment plants, and it's expense that we try to avoid. We charge particular permitting fees when a new connection is made for inflow and infiltration, and that's where those funds are raised by.
Okay. You know how much money is in that fund?
No. Dave, is it a separate account, or does it fall within the general special revenue account?
Hold on, nobody can hear you. Speak into your mic. Can we give him a mic?
Oh, now, there we go. All right. It is a special revenue fund, and those fees are generated through the permit process. We typically transfer in about the same amount, $300,000, each year, and we bring in about that much through the fees each year. I can get the exact balance in maybe about five minutes.
No, 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 thanks. But, and what is CIP reserves?
CIP reserves is part of the, one of two reserves that the Sewer Enterprise has. The Sewer Enterprise has the Sewer Stabilization Fund that we reviewed earlier, and we have the Capital Plan Reserves. Part of their five-year financial plan, they are putting, in this case, I think it's $100,000 into the CIP reserves to fund unforeseen items within the capital budget. The current balance is about $700,000.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 26? How about Article 27? Article 28? Not yet. Mr. Kirk, is that hand up?
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Article 28 includes funds for the Poor Brook Farm. I presume that's the Poor Farm Brook? Yes?
We're going to hire you to edit the book next time. Thank you.
So what, what, what is, what are you going to do there for $5,000?
So the Poor Farm Brook is a, influenced by our drinking water wells, and we are required to do ongoing monitor and some repairs and maintenance to preserve the waterway.
Okay.
Further comments or questions with reference to Articles 26, 27, and 28? Not hearing or seeing any. I'll now call for a vote, requires a two-thirds. Will now move Bundle 13, Articles 26, 27, and 28. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town meeting members, we will now move to Article 29, which is a citizen's petition to amend a general bylaw. The petitioners are here, and because it is an initiative petition, they are, gentlemen, join us down front, please. They are in need of a town meeting member to move the initiative petition, to get it in play, and then in need of a second.
Don't move.
Motion has been made to move the petition article, and a second has been provided. A gentleman and ladies, sorry about that, didn't see you earlier. You have up to 10 minutes to provide town meeting with your presentation, and then we will open it to the floor for various questions. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Prabha Vadlamudi, and I'm one of the high school petitioners on the resolution of banning single-use plastic bottles under one liter. I'm joined by my other fellow high school students, Akshay Janani and Gia Sharma, and they'll be joining later on this presentation to discuss about the implementation. So first, I think it's important to address the problem that we are facing in the United States and the state itself. Every year, people in Massachusetts generate a mountain of plastic waste. That number is around 3.4 billion plastic bottles. And the problem is, these plastic bottles aren't being recycled. They're going to our landfills, and approximately 80% of plastic bottles people buy end up in landfills, and it takes 450 years to decompose. A really disheartening statistic is Americans throw away enough plastic bottles each year to circle the Earth four times. Every hour, we throw away 2.5 million plastic bottles. This is just a few examples of where we see plastic bottles all over the town. If you go to the public library, if you go to the high school, you see these plastic bottles everywhere. And even if you go to Dean Park and local parks around the town, you see these plastic bottles all over our town. So next, it's about the impact about this and why this ban is so important for our town and our constituents. So we have three impacts: the health impact, the environmental impact, and the economic impact as well. So the first thing is children are drinking plastics. Microplastics have been detected in everyday plastic items, and studies have shown that these microplastics are affecting the youth disproportionately than they are adults. One of the statistics found that 10 to 20 times more microplastics are found in infant feces than adults, raising questions about their effects on children's well-being. But this also affects adults as well. Each liter bottle contains around 240,000 nanoplastics, and these chemicals such as BPA have led to various carcinogens such as cancer, and has even had signs to lead to microplastic diseases such as cardiovascular disease and such. A statistic that we found that was very interesting that we would like to share is 1 million plastic bottles are brought around the world every minute. As of 2021, more than half a trillion plastic bottles will be sold annually. At best, less than one-third of all plastic bottles will be recycled. So by using a reusable water bottle, you could prevent an average of 156 plastic bottles annually. This also has a lot of environmental impacts. We found four. One is energy usage. To transport these plastic bottles and even to recycle these plastic bottles uses an immense amount of energy to recycle and simply oftentimes aren't even recycled. But also, like we stated, if you go to oceans and if you also see marine animals, they're congesting these plastic bottles, and that's also having an immense impact. But also, the greenhouse gases. To produce a plastic bottle uses immense amount of greenhouse gases, which ends up contributing to CO2 as well. And at the end, it's an economic impact. Studies have shown that tap water is 3,000% less expensive than using a plastic water bottle. For example, bottled water costs hundreds of times more than tap water to produce. For example, bottled water costs hundreds of times more than tap water to produce. Tap water costs less than a half a penny per gallon, while bottled water costs an average of $1.11 per gallon. And so, working off what Prabha said, next we move on to solutions. I think we can start by addressing the fact that incineration itself is not the answer, as it uses resources to burn and causes harmful chemicals to enter our food chain through bisphenols, BPAs, and microplastics that could undoubtedly be more harmful in our systems, but also in the air as well. And when it comes to recycling, it's really just a short-term kind of stigma that we have, that recycling is this like great process. And while it is, and while Massachusetts has a residential recycling rate, as you can see, of 27%, the reality is, plastic is not as recyclable as you would think it is. And in that sense, recycling for alternatives is better, like aluminum cans, when recycled at a rate around 50 to 70%, while plastic bottles have recycling rates of around 29 to 40%. And so, the alternatives we are trying to provide here are reusable water bottles and bottles over 1 liter, since the ban is specified to bottles under a liter. Specifically, we, our research shows that aluminum is more sustainable than plastic, since it uses less energy to make and is infinitely recyclable compared to plastic, which isn't. And you can also see that plastic bottle companies themselves are shifting to these alternatives, trying to move away from this trend of plastic bottles. You can see in Poland Spring, Arkofina, and Dasani, all slowly shifting to alternatives, because they also recognize the impact it has on our climate, our health, and all the impacts that we formally addressed.
Okay. As you can see, Lexington has already started implementing this. They've already put, oh, they've already put water refill stations in their schools. And just after one week, there were 3,637 plastic water bottles that were refilled, and 128,750 fewer non-biodegradable plastic bottles that would be going in area landfills. This clearly shows that towns can do this with little resistance. Now, we all know Shrewsbury has drinking water, and it is in compliance with federal health-based drinking water standards. That just proves that we don't have to go far away to get more water. This may seem daunting, but in fact, there are 28 other towns that have already done this, such as Arlington and Lexington. If Northborough and Westborough does this as well as us, the impact will be monumental, and even going further, this could become a statewide ban. To circle back to Lexington, it's key to note that this was passed by a citizen's petition, not by the local government, but by citizens who are actively seeking change.
Another important aspect in town that has implemented this ban is Concord. A group in Lincoln, Lincoln, a town that also banned these plastic water bottles, went to a business called Crosby's. They talked to the manager of Crosby's, and they stated that customers had mentioned the change in packaging from plastic recyclables, but they were still purchasing water. There had been no drops in profits and no drop in the number of customers coming in. He, in fact, told Lincoln businesses that they have nothing to worry about, and reiterated that at the bottom, that the bottle ban has had no impact on Crosby's business. Similarly, we also see this in Hingham and also Arlington, Sudbury as well, where they saw similar impacts on how they were able to ban these plastic bottle bans, and people simply turned to these reusable options. They also told us that they have seen a really minimal amount of people complaining about it, and they have seen no business drop as well. So, we're just supporting an already-town initiative. In our Sustainability Committee, we proposed an outline that stated that we would go net zero by 2030. Based off of this, we are helping support this initiative by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. But more importantly, in their outline on their climate plan, they plan to reduce single-use plastics. And one, one way we can reduce single-use plastics and comply with this initiative is by supporting this ban today. But before we move on to questions, there's just a last few words that we want us to tell town meeting members before we vote. I first want to thank the town for allowing us to present this petition. It's not every day that you see high school students coming here and talking about an incentive that matters so much to us, but seemingly, in modern-day times, it seems like we are the ones who have to come up and talk about climate change and its impacts. Unfortunately, we are watching our future unravel, where global warming is at an all-time high, and action against it is at a low. However, when change is needed, our town is known for stepping up. We were ahead of the curve when we banned plastic bags. Because of our efforts, more towns started to follow. We were even able to declare a climate emergency back in 2020, not because we had to, but because it was the right thing to do. These acts make us high schoolers grateful, but also proud of our town for stepping up when it was needed. But unfortunately, we can't stop now. More change, more action, and more resilience is needed to ensure a better future for all of us. And that's exactly why we are here today. The young generation faces the consequences of inadequate action taken when it comes to climate change. We are the ones who face the high temperatures. We are the ones who face the health impacts when we consume microplastics, and we are the ones who need to pick up the trash and plastic that's all over our parks and all over our streets. But the problem is, individual action only goes so far when policy doesn't follow. We reuse, we recycle, and we do our best to ensure that our town has a sustainable future. But the problem is, when these policies don't follow, we are simply making our situation Even when it asks us to make tough changes today, we are not asking for perfection, or are we expecting all of the world's problems to end with the snap of our fingers? We are just asking for progress, for courage, and for a vote that says we hear you. Because at the end of the day, this decision isn't just about waste and climate change. It's about will, and whether or not we have the will to do what's right, even if it makes tough decisions on us. We're asking you, all the ones that have the power to vote, to do what we cannot, have a say in today's vote, and make sure that our future is more sustainable and has more protection and to ensure that climate change is solved. This is simply one step in a bigger problem that we must address to ensure that we have a sustainable future. And we hope that town meeting members understand this and take the necessary steps in order to create a better, sustainable future for our town. We hope that you vote yes on today's bill.
Town meeting members, comments or questions with reference to Article 29? Mr. Moderator, Dave Lennon, Precinct 8. I'm wondering if we're going to get a recommendation by the Finance Committee, and perhaps is there someone from the Public Health Department who would like to weigh in? Finance Committee, did you vote on this?
Yes, we did.
What is your vote, please, sir?
We very regretfully did not, do not recommend passage of this article by a vote of six to zero.
And you had a question for the Department of Public Health?
They would like to weigh in.
Mr. Mizuka.
There's no public health staff in attendance this evening.
I don't know, so there we go. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 29? Yes?
I'm Shawna Parker Dalton from Precinct 8. I just want to say that microplastics are currently in the air, in the rainwater, in fruits and vegetables, as well as animal products like meat, fish, eggs, and milk. The beverage industry is obviously under no obligation or having any interest in protecting our health. And so, I think that collective action like this is the approach that we need to make a difference.
Further comments or questions with reference to 29, Ms. Faustian?
First, I just want to commend you guys for having the guts to get up here and make such a great presentation, so thank you for that. I do have some concerns, and maybe you can help answer some of them. So, I personally feel like it kind of has to be customer-driven. My family stopped using them a while back, and I think people have to make their own choices about it. And I think it's great that we don't use them anymore, and I hope more people will do that. Also, I'm concerned about the commercial businesses in Shrewsbury. I'm worried that people are just going to go to Northborough and stock up on their water, so that's troubling. Also, people may make worse choices when they go to stop and get a water. They now have to get like a Gatorade or a sugary drink, which is also in plastic. Also, the quality of our drinking water. A lot of people need filtration, can't afford that. And will the refill stations also have filtration systems? And what would the cost to that be for like the schools? And if it's banned, how long will it take for the manufacturers to catch up and have alternatives? And also, have we looked into how safe drinking out of aluminum is? Because I did read up that there are some dangers to that as well. And also, I thought you might want to take this to the state or federal, because I feel like doing it just in Shrewsbury isn't enough, so just something to think about, and that's it.
Would the petitioners care to respond?
No, you're good. I think there's a few things that we need to address there. I'm going to start bottom up, based off what I remember. So, first, let's start with state, right? I think doing it at the state level is fantastic, and that's what we all hope for, right? But I think, like we start said, or like we said previously, and what we have found when it came to plastic bags and styrofoam, is that once we make change, other towns follow. And I think if you want to create a reaction from the state, you need to take action in your towns. And that's the fundamental basis of all local politics, right? The change starts locally. And if you can create this local change, then we hope that the state can do the same. And that's what we hope for in today's. And then, when you talk about aluminum water bottles and how safe they are, so when it comes to the problem of aluminum, it's only when the aluminum is actually contaminated within the water itself. There have been no studies that show that, you know, drinking out of aluminum water has actually caused many health issues, but if you turn that to plastic water bottles, there have been many definitive studies that show otherwise. And then, now sugary drinks and that aspect of it. So, I think one of the studies that came up was a University of Vermont study in 2014 that tells us that when University of Vermont did ban plastic bottles, people went towards sugary drinks. But what we found in our research is that one year later, a Washington University study contrasted all of the University of Vermont's findings, and found that people did in fact not go towards sugary drinks, and they actually found a reduction of people actually buying those sugary drinks. And even when you look at the evidence that we find from other towns, and even any of like the recent evidence from, give it 2022 to 2025, we have seen no conclusive evidence that showed that when people have banned plastic bottles, they have gone to sugary drinks, right? Because at the end of the day, people are looking to buy water, they are not looking to buy like these other sources. And I think connecting it back to the, right? We're not, we're not removing this, we're simply replacing it. And I think that's the biggest misconception that we have, is that we are eliminating all the water supply in our town. But the truth is, we're just replacing it with these better alternatives that are more sustainable, and that can actually help our town in the long term, right? So, when it comes to that sugary drink aspect, people will just go to the other alternative waters. And I think, if I remember correctly, the others were also economically related to businesses, and that type of concern, like we stated with these towns like Concord and them, they have not seen any business reduction. I think that's the best evidence. If you can look at the towns that have actually implemented this ban and what they have saw as a result, the evidence shows that they have not actually seen any problems with it. If anything, you know, the customers were able to, you know, find a different alternative, and that's what the evidence shows. So, I hope that applies to all of your questions. If I do, if I am missing anything, I do apologize.
Thank you. Dale McGee, Precinct...
Guys, let's have one town meeting, please. Mr. Dr. McGee.
Dale McGee, Precinct 5. This was a very well-done presentation, certainly well-intended. I think the idea of discouraging single-use bottles is excellent. It's the way I live. I don't use single-use bottles. I go to a meeting, I don't take them, we don't buy them, don't approve of it. So, I'm all with you there. I think one of my concerns is, is that right behavior, the right thing to do, doesn't necessarily need to result in a law, in a rule that stays there and is there years later, sometimes resulting in unintended consequences. Recently, I traveled in Europe, and we were in a number of areas where they had banned the plastic bottles, and they are using glass bottles instead. And a discarded glass bottle on the roadside is not just an eyesore, it is a health hazard because somebody could step on it. A child who drops a glass bottle could cut themselves. Those sorts of substitutions aren't necessarily better. Those glass bottles clearly weighed much more, and therefore would cause more, cost more to move around. So, there are unintended consequences that I think we need to be aware of and sensitive to. I approve of what you want to do, I just am not in agreement with the idea that we need to turn it into a law. In 2018, a similar group of high school students came before us to ban polystyrene, ban the cups and the trays and the things like that, and that rule passed. The reason for doing it was first that it was going to be collecting in a landfill. When it was pointed out to them that we don't put them in a landfill, we burn them here, they migrated the reason for doing this to decreasing the amount of CO2 that's released in the environment. It passed, and as a result of that, the schools started to use compostable trays instead of the polystyrene trays that they had before. Those trays weigh several times more, cost more to move around, and they're compostable, except the town does not provide composting services. And so, they're put in the trash and burned. And the net result of that is, is that the particulates and the CO2 that is released from that substitute is substantially higher than it would have been by burning the polystyrene. So, again, a well-intended bill, unintended, and here we are, seven years later after that was passed, it's still there. It's not going anywhere. We've actually contributed more to CO2 in the environment than if we had not done that. So, I think we should all ask ourselves to decrease our use of these things. I think we should maintain some sort of flexibility, but I think this is something in which a public relations campaign and things such as that maybe provide the flexibility we need as a community.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 29?
Hi, Pat Cumber, Precinct 10. Great presentation. I don't have a laundry list of reasons why we should avoid doing what you say, but I think the body here deserves to hear the story of Dennis, Massachusetts, a town in our Commonwealth who has gone down the road and back again. I don't know if you guys studied, I know you studied the 128 Belt towns, I don't know if you studied Dennis, though. Did you, did you read about that one?
We looked into Dennis, but we have looked into like more of like the local regions, such as like Lexington and Sudbury, but not really into the Cape Area now.
Well, Dennis was interesting, because Dennis has a open town meeting, so the, as opposed to our elected town meeting. So, the attendance at town meetings varies greatly depending on what's on the, what's on the docket. There was a motion, I would put it, I don't know, five years ago, to ban single-use water bottles. And it passed through town meeting and was enacted. There wasn't too much attendance at town meeting. The evidence was clear, the shelves were cleared in the supermarkets of the bottles, and there was big empty spaces, kind of like when there was no toilet paper, but it was a different aisle, right? So, then they, and anytime you went over to Yarmouth, you could always meet Dennis people in the supermarket there, because that's where they went to. They just went over the bridge to buy their water bottles there and bring them back. And then, the attendance at the next year's annual town meeting was much larger, because we had found an issue that would motivate the voters, and it was the... And it was the water bottle ban. It woke everybody up, and nobody was fighting about the beaches that year, nobody was fighting about the sewers, but they had the water bottles to fight about, and they filled the halls. And, and the ban was overwhelmingly overturned one year later. So it's just a, it's a story, and like I say, I'm not advocating one way or the other on your motion, but it's an interesting story, and I think people should have that kind of, you know, we've heard the environmental and the health arguments, this is a political body, and just try to think about the politics of lawmaking, banning things, and the way civics works, and, and the way voters can be energized. That's all.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 29? Gentleman on the middle.
You mentioned it would make a big impact if Northborough and Westborough also enacted this. Are they considering this at their town meetings right now?
I believe Westborough has something that was already in place for single-use plastic bottles, and I'm not too sure on Northborough. Do you want to talk about that?
Northborough has also begun doing the same thing as Westborough. They're at almost the same level as us, but their town meetings are more active, so more people voice their concerns. So just a little bit ahead of us, but we can also do this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with the reference? Gentleman on the aisle. Don't walk away, look, okay, he's got it.
Ben Rudolph, Precinct 6. Is it fair to assume that the fiscal impact of adopting this would be fairly minimal, as opposed to, say, spending money on a public relations campaign or some other ways that might cost a lot of money to try to address this problem?
Mr. Mizikar.
Do you have any idea?
Yes, I would say it would be very minimal, and we would take a similar approach that we do to the other items that are banned within the community, and work on a reactive basis and seek out violations in that format.
Maybe even a neutral impact to the budget? Thank you.
Certainly. Let's see, anybody who hasn't spoken this evening? Gentleman right up there.
I would like to say, good initiative, beautifully done presentation. The only question I had was for the school committee. I think we already have the water sprouts in our schools.
Oh, excuse me, sir. Would you introduce yourself with your precinct?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Rajeshu Palapati, Precinct 4.
Thank you.
I think we already have some of these drinking sprouts in our schools. And the problem I have is, it might get overruled again next year because of the lack of water sprouts. So I think we need to focus on building those around town. For example, I go for a job, I need water, so I cannot carry those, you know, big bottles anymore, nor can I buy a single-use plastic bottle. So maybe build some of the water sprouts in the area.
Go ahead.
So we're giving the town one and a half years to implement this. I didn't really make this clear before, but one and a half years is a lot of time, considering that businesses, or, sorry, I apologize, towns before us only had six months to do so, right? So when you triple that time, basically, we're allowing the town to really take this initiative to a next level, right? And like you were saying, I think the next level is making sure that we have those water refilling stations. And something that we hope that we can plan on, and that other towns have also done, such as Hingham, they have contacted their local water supply and applied for grants to get these water refilling stations. The hope is that if we do pass this bill tonight, the next step is making sure that we apply for these grants, or find a way to get these refilling stations, because, you know, that's how we really create that next step of change that is needed.
Anyone who has yet to speak this evening? Sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Finance Committee, give some more information as to why we gave this recommendation. There was a broad consensus, we'd like to commend this group of young people for their initiative. We totally resonated with their intent and the desire as far as the effects on climate. But there were certain reasons that we would like to bring to the attention of the esteemed town meeting, as far as why we voted against this. One was basically, we were given a presentation from a member. We were in contact, somebody came from the Massachusetts Beverage Association, a gentleman who is an executive VP at Polar Beverages, and he presented information as far as the initiatives that they are involved with, and which Shrewsbury Town also receives incentives. One is basically the Every Bottle Back Initiative. The town receives, and Mr. Mizikar can confirm this, but our recycled bins were funded by this initiative. And there are, there is a belief that basically, their philosophy is that this will be against the business interests, as well as the proper way to achieve the aims that these young people are trying to achieve is through creating a recycle culture. And through innovation and better recycling, a culture in which people recycle their bottles, because the PET bottles are 100% recyclable, they, if they go, if they reach back to the proper channels, there is very minimal impact. And that's about what, that, these were basically the reasons that led to the vote on the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Kevin Flaherty, Precinct 5. I just want to echo a lot of other sentiments. Great job, you know, you guys have done a lot of research. As a small business owner who has nothing to do with single-use water bottles, can you talk about if you've done any research with any town, any, any businesses and towns, we've spoken to any of the owners of the businesses, and what do they feel the impact will be on their business related to being unable to sell single-use bottles?
Yeah, of course. I did reach out to a couple of businesses. Most of the restaurants I spoke to already don't use plastics, so we wouldn't see much of an impact there. I also did talk to a couple of gas stations and businesses around the center of town specifically. And as soon as I sort of explained to them about the economic and health impacts that replacing these single-use plastics would have, they were more than happy to be on board with this initiative and supported it like right away. And these phone calls didn't really last too long, because there wasn't much pushback, as we saw with these other towns as well. The business impact there was very minimal, if any at all, and I think Shrewsbury would follow that same path. And in doing so, again, like we kind of presented already, Northborough and neighboring towns have followed our sort of initiatives in the past when it comes to styrofoam and other initiatives like that. Doing so in this, this plastic law environment would also result in the same kind of push forward that we need in today's society.
Mr. Malina.
Mr. Malina, Precinct 1. It's gonna be kind of a shock, but I'm one of the co-authors for the Plastic Bag Ban. And hearing, hearing the presentation tonight, and again, accolades as well that you guys formed to come here and talk about this, this issue and bring it to our attention, I can't personally support it. Because as I hold my water bottle in my hand, empty from tonight's conversations, I tell you to myself, well, how am I gonna get this refilled? And I know at least in this building, they're not nice new shiny water stations, you know, it's green-crusted right over the, you know, the lips, and I don't know how many mouths have been touching it, so I don't want to dare do that. And I'm not going to the bathroom to refill this, right? So just, just a comedic commentary about, you know, coming in here, but, but in reality is like, I carry this thing with me all the time, but it's only, it's only 16 ounces. And I do it on purpose, because that's a size that fits in my car, and that's how much I want it to take for weight along with all the bags I usually carry. Now imagine as well, I have my kids with me, and they have their water bottles as well, we go everywhere with our water bottles, but eventually it runs out, especially in a hot day. And so if I had no access to, to water bottles when I want to go to Shrewsbury Pizza, when I want to go to a gas station to, to get more water, I'm left, I am left with alternatives that I don't like. I don't like sugary drinks, I don't like the juices, I don't want fake water that has some fake chemical in there that makes flavors that, I don't want that. And typically, those containers, they cost more. So, so of course, a business person will say, sure, take away the water bottle, I'll replace it with a higher, a higher retail value item, like, you know, a Celsius or something like that, energy drinks, et cetera, et cetera. And so there is a replacement from the business perspective. But on a personal level, what am I left to do? Now, if I wound up going at the gas station, and they happen to have a gallon water bottle, or one liter and above, great, but that's not always the case. Number two, it actually reminds me of what happened this weekend, when I went to visit a town, Rockland, Mass., right? And that's about an hour and a half east of here. And when I got there, realized that they were under a boil, a water boil order, because there was contamination, there was E. coli on the water supply, and that affected six towns concurrently. And my first reaction was, all right, well, I can't drink the water here, and I'm, I'm visiting, I don't have the ability to boil the water, I'm gonna go to the gas station and get water. I can imagine in that scenario, if I didn't have access to water, what am I gonna do, right? I have the sugary drinks. So that's why I see that as both a, a personal choice perspective, even for somebody who carries a water bottle everywhere. I want to be able to have a fresh water, clean, not, not a sugary drink. And two, I'm concerned about that if there is a public safety issue, yes, eventually there will be logistics to fill the water, you know, amongst the community, but I want that available the moment I hear a notice, the moment the Department of Health says there's a problem with water, I want to be able to run to the store, get that water right now, not wait for the logistics of that water then to finally get there days later. That's my concern. Thank you.
Would you like to respond, sir?
About water quality specifically in our town, there is a big concern about, you know, the type of water we are drinking because of the manganese situation that we had a few years ago. But the hope is that by 2027, when this law would be enacted, we hope that we would also have the PFAS facility by the end or by the middle of 2027 as well. So with the PFAS facility being online by around that time period, the hope is that we can have better water quality in Shrewsbury without having to worry about other health concerns that, you know, in the rare circumstances could be happening in our town. But to the personal level as well, you see these aluminum water bottles a lot, right? And if, one thing that I've restated a lot is, once you, there is the supply of these aluminum water bottles and these alternatives, but there's no demand. And that's why these costs are so high. But if you replace these water sources with the aluminum cans, you're naturally increasing the demand when you already have that supply. And, you know, basic supply and demand, that would naturally reduce the cost as well. So when it comes to like that personal usage as well, we find that, you know, the cost wouldn't be as much by 2027, because businesses are already naturally transitioning away from plastic water bottles to these aluminum cans or even bottles as well. And, you know, we'll naturally see these prices decrease. So I don't believe that we'll see much of a personal problem, while I do agree that it is a concern.
Ed.
Thank you. Ed Bolter, Precinct 1. Having watched a lot of these kinds of things get, you know, advocated for and passed over almost 65 years, one of the things I tend to notice is that there are typically not very objective success measures in place. Like how do, how are we gonna measure the success of this program, other than getting a yes vote tonight, right? Or, you know, I mean, how are you instrumented to see if you've moved the needle on global warming, or, or lowering the microplastic rate of Shrewsbury citizens, right? And so my, my issue with this, and I do commend you, because I think it takes a lot of determination, passion, and courage to do what you're doing. But it's, you know, it's, you know, if you, if you've done all this and you've actually removed choice, you've used government to remove choice from people, that kind of makes you at odds with the cause of liberty. That's a growing problem. But if you can't definitively say, along this one and a half year time span, to implement, there's gonna be checkpoints and measures to show, you know, other than maybe less bottles, you know, or we've replaced plastic trash on your lawn versus aluminum trash on your lawn, you know, how are you determining success? Other than, you know, we have to do something, right? Which is typically what kind of happens. And then the, the, just the secondary point is, particularly when it comes to unintended consequences, aluminum toxicosis is a real thing. And depending on the pH of the water in the container that's in it, it will determine how much aluminum actually you're now ingesting, because you force people to go to aluminum. And aluminum is a very harmful substance to the human genome. So there's a lot to think about here. And I, you know, I commend you, like I say, but I don't think it's well thought out enough yet to, to be a viable option. Thank you.
Would you care to respond?
I think to the second point on aluminum being a harmful substance, we did our research on it, and we did not find aluminum, when it came to these water bottles specifically, to have any negative impact on the human health, right? When you look at aluminum cans, we've been having them in our soda cans for years now, and we have not seen anyone say that they have negative health impacts by it. But what we have had seen is these plastic bottles actually having these negative impacts, which I think is a more valuable impact that we need to weigh. But to the first point on, you know, excuse me, I forgot about the first point. Do you mind repeating it?
Objective measures.
Oh, yeah, sorry, about objective measures, right? I think success is based off influence, right? What we've seen in the past is that once we've started to do things, towns around us have also started to do things. And I think that's success in itself. If you can start a chain of reaction of people starting to understand and be educated on the situation, you know, that's success in itself, right? And when you create education, and when you try to educate people on the impacts of climate change, then you're starting to create change, and that's success in itself. But, you know, more, more specifically, and I think numbers-wise, you can, when you go to refilling stations, it tells you how many plastic water bottles that you're eliminating. I think something that you want more specifically, I think, if you go to these refilling stations, it says it specifically, and that's something that we hope can happen by mid-2027.
On the aisle.
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. So when you get water in a, an aluminum can, you can recycle that can, and you can recycle it an infinite number of times. When you buy water in a plastic bottle, not only are you ingesting microplastics, and they, you can't get them out of your brain. Once they're in your brain, they're there for the rest of your life. So, and they accumulate, of course. And just consider, if they're already in babies when they're born, what is happening to them that never happened to us? Because the amount of single-use plastics has increased so dramatically in the course of our lifetimes, in the course of even the, just the past couple decades, and it's going up now. So that in itself is a horrific problem. But then, the bottles can be recycled, but not many times, because the plastic degrades in the process of being recycled. And so then what you get is lower-quality plastics that no company wants to use. They just don't want to use them. And so sometimes they get, sometimes they get recycled into clothing, but the clothing produces microplastics. And every time you wash them, those plastics go into the water. It is a horrific problem, and it is everywhere in the world. You can say, well, if it's that big a problem, there's nothing we can do about it. And I would say, when there's a problem that big, everyone has to do something about it.
The gentleman on my far left.
Thank you so much. John Chenier, Precinct 10. So I have a couple comments to respond to here. One, the, the case that was cited about the town of Dennis being comparable to the proposal that's before us today is simply not comparable. These are not comparable proposals. One is for plastic, specifically plastic bottles, single-use plastic bottles under the size of one liter, whereas the Dennis proposal included any bottle under one liter. So those are not comparable. So those are not comparable. So when you see empty shelves in Dennis, and you're talking about folks who are going there on vacation and buying cases of water for the beach and whatever, it's not comparable to compare a, I don't know, vacation town on the Cape to what's being proposed today. Secondly, like, my, sort of, my initial thought here was, as you can tell from what I'm wearing, a coach lacrosse here in the town. And, you know, passing by a couple weeks ago, the Shrewsbury Little League Parade and the general sales of water and Gatorade and snacks and things like that for nonprofits and parks and rec operations here in the town. My concern is that about 15% to 20% of our sales for Shrewsbury youth lacrosse comes from the sale of bottles of water at our games on game day. That's simply absent-minded 11-year-olds forgetting water when they come to a game. However, to the point about liberty that was made earlier, so I guess my second question is about like, sort of, the enforcement level and where this sort of extends to. We can talk about retail operations all we want, but we can't ignore the impact on things like Fun Runs and the upcoming Pride 5K and things like that, where single-use bottled water will be sold. And sort of, what are the solutions for replacing that? And a lot of this sort of stems from maybe a lack of access to potable public water sources at places like the library or schools and things like that. Or even, as Mr. Malina cited, here in this own building, you know, that he's feeling thirsty, here we are at 10-plus PM. My water bottle is also empty here. But to the cause of, to this question about liberty and whether or not we can have freedom of choice, the long-term consequence is when your health options are removed and your liberty because of your health is removed because of decisions that are made by a governing body like this, or made by corporations that are deciding whether or not to dictate public health because of their practices for recycling or how they are packaging their products, that removes the liberty from our choice. And so initiatives like this then give us a choice about where we are deciding where our products are produced and how they are produced, and what products they are contained within, and what we are choosing to expose ourselves to. So I commend you all, right? Everyone here who voiced a point of consent, all commended you on your efforts. I'm going to commend you again. But it's not to sort of backtrack that and then sort of contradict the work that you've already done. So well done, gentlemen and lady. Appreciate your efforts. And anecdotally, I want to cite, if you all look in the trees and on the roadside, you don't see plastic bags anymore. You don't see Styrofoam Dunkin' Donuts cups, right? All of that has been removed from our town and the waste. And so I commend those who did the work before us. And so, thank you again. Again, the youth is here to lead America, and I'm appreciative of your efforts.
Ms. Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. I consider myself part of the Captain Planet generation, right? Like, I grew up watching that cartoon. And all the people in this room that are older than me told me the whole time I was growing up, that all I had to do was recycle these plastic bottles, and I was going to help to save the planet. And I know you guys were all telling us this because that was the best information that you had in the 1980s and the 1990s, right? But it turned out it wasn't true. We can recycle these bottles till the cows come home, and there's still going to be an overabundance of plastic bottles on this planet that we don't have any use for. So there's that. The other thing is, I'm personally addicted to sparkling water, so you could take away the plastic water bottles, and it's going to have very little impact on what I do at my house. But we know that to care for this planet, the answer is not to do nothing. We may not always do the right thing. We may not always know what the right thing is to do. We didn't know before. It's evolving, the science is changing. All we can do is take the next best step that is laid out in front of us. And what these bright, future leaders are proposing, I believe, and I hope others in this room will, is the next best step that we can take. And maybe in 10 years, it does change. Maybe we find out that plastic bottles are good for us and microplastics make us smarter. Maybe. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. Right now, what we know is that we have this problem. This is one small step that we can take to help keep this problem at bay. So I commend you, and I support the band if it wasn't clear. And I hope that other people will keep that in mind. The future belongs to the people who will live in it. You guys are the people that are going to live in that future, okay?
Mr. Collins. He's right in the middle.
Hi, Peter Collins, Precinct 4. Does anyone smell cigarette smoke in here? Anyone? You do?
Yep.
Okay. What's that?
Good nose.
Do you? I don't know where you're smelling it from. Because the reason the rest of us aren't smelling cigarette smoke right now is that, you know, we made a law to change people's behavior, to change their choices. And, you know, I think that that's, that point kind of falls by the wayside. And I've been sitting here, and I've been coming to town meeting a long time, and I'm a professional sales guy, so I hear a lot of BS and a lot of people saying, I don't want to do this for whatever reason. But this is, this is actually getting funny in here. You know, we have, we have the future before us tonight. And they're coming to us and they're saying, please stop poisoning our environment. You know, our kids are going to have to grow up in this. Our babies probably is going to have plastic in their bloodstream right now, and there's not a whole bunch we can do about that. But the generation after that, maybe we can, maybe we can change that. And, you know, everyone's looking for perfection here. Oh, well, we banned the bottles, that's not going to help anything. Every journey starts with the first step. That's what we need to do tonight. And not only is it the first step, we need to take the first step on the right path. And if we do this, it's because that's where we should be headed. And there is no dispute that plastics are harming us. That's not like, no one's even debating that. And so we know what's going on. We're just going to spend $14 million on a PFAS filter. Okay, that's like having a hole in your roof. Not fixing the hole, just going out and spending $14 million bucks on a bunch of pots and pans to collect the water. We're not fixing the problem, we're just mitigating it. So I think we should probably start to focus on what it is and how we can stop it. And every little, excuse me, every little thing is going to count. And so, you know, I think that that is a good reason to consider this bill right now. You know, we had the same arguments about people going to different towns and buying stuff. And they set it with the plastic bags, they set it with the Styrofoam cups. And I can assure you that after we do this, that you're going to go into Market Basket on a Saturday morning, and every one of those 20 lines is going to have seven carts in it, waiting to get checked out. And they're going to have water in containers, single-use containers that aren't plastic, in their basket. And if you go to any concert right now, and most sports events, you can't buy water in a plastic bottle. They're basically all coming, you know, from aluminum. You know, except with Polar Park, you know, hence the name, and that's who came to speak for the Finance Committee that night. And, you know, that's just seemed kind of disingenuous to me. He was bragging in the same time that they've increased their bottling, you know, all over the country now. They've got plants down south. They're not, as I think he explained it, you know, they're, you know, the old Polar Planters, little regional guys in Worcester, they're a big operation now. You know how many aluminum cans these guys bottle? They already have them. They're doing it for soda. They're just going to reprint them, put water on the label, and sell them. The market is going to seek its own level, the market will adjust, that's what markets do. So I say we support this. I think it's a good idea. I think these guys have a good point. And it's really funny to me that they have to kind of drive, or make us, you know, make us make a smart decision for a couple of 16-year-olds to come in here and have to do that to us. So that's what I think.
Very good. Two over, the gentleman, two over.
Dean Jane, Precinct 4. I came into this meeting unsure how I felt about this issue, and it was a great presentation, very good debate. And I now feel I'm for it. And the reason why I say this is, there was a time where we didn't have water bottles. We've had a habit now, and it's convenient, and there are a lot of good arguments for why this could be an issue. But I'm willing to push forward, very much like our esteemed member here said, taking a leap of faith for what they said, and we'll find ways to adjust. It starts, I think, with meetings like this, and we can see where this takes us if we can change minds. And I don't think it's that much of a risk. It will be an inconvenience, but there are always alternatives, and there will be alternatives, and the market will respond, and we'll find our own solutions. So that's why I'm in favor of this.
Ms. Minton.
Patricia Minton, Precinct 7. Great presentation, I commend you on that. How many businesses did you contact that will, that could affect it?
We were given a list of businesses, and once we found like a general trend within like five or six of them, we found that like, with a couple of restaurants, you can kind of broaden that to like most restaurants because restaurants already don't use plastic, and so there wouldn't be an issue there. But again, if you see like, if you ask a couple of gas stations, like I asked four or five of them, and we have like even more than that in the town of Shrewsbury, like the people that we did ask, again, had no problem once they addressed these like environmental impacts. Because ultimately, like, like Mr. Collins was saying, you can have all these like inconveniences, but at the end of the day, it's our health that we're affecting. And so, once these gas stations and businesses understood that, again, they had no problem supporting it.
Another question. Have you considered that the State House, the state, is reconsidering to realign the current bottle bill to include bottles like this?
Yeah, so that's the bottle bill that would get the taxes on those water bottles, is that correct?
Thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone, oh, Mr. Ghulie, I was just going to ask, is there anyone who has yet to speak this evening?
Bill Ghulie, Precinct 8. Lots of very interesting stories and comments and information, but I think it's time to move the question.
The motion has been made, is there a second? To move the question. As we know by this point in the meeting, it would cease debate and we would move to an immediate vote on Article 29. All those in favor of ending debate shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to a vote on Article 29, which requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 29 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Ooh, the noes have it. And the motion is defeated. And believe it or not, we're going to have a standing vote. So, somebody made the motion, I take it there's seven people, okay. We all know the rules in a standing vote, please stand by to stand by, let the tellers get in position, and then we will do the standing vote. All right, all those in favor, please stand and remain standing.
10. 11. 23. 24.
Please be seated. All those who are voting no, please rise and remain standing.
18. 33. 20. 28.
Feel free to sit down. Town meeting members on this matter, 68 in the affirmative, 99 in the negative. Motion does not pass. Town meeting members, we find ourselves at the hour of 10:45. As many of you know, only with a vote of this body can we take a new matter up after 10:30. True, 7 o'clock tomorrow evening in this very same hall. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a call over there, or the call? All right. While we go through that.